And again, as our past few have been, it's going to be a virtual meeting. Given our restrictions with COVID right now, so. Before we start the meeting, I've got a few opening remarks, just kind of housekeeping. As we prepare for for our virtual meeting, so this meeting is being recorded by Westford Cat. We respectfully ask that everyone mute their computer microphones and phones when they are not in use to avoid unnecessary noise during the meeting. This is an open meeting, so for all the panelists whom have access to the chat panel. I would like to remind you to not use that function to discuss any of the content of the meeting. But to ask a question or any technical issues with the video conferencing platform, and please direct them to the organizers. All votes will be done by roll call. All attendees are muted upon arrival into the meeting to reduce unnecessary sounds from disrupting the meeting. If an attendee wishes to contribute a question or comment, they may virtually raise their hand via the platform's control panel. And the chair or the staff will recognize and unmute the participant where they can voice their concerns, similar to approaching the mic at a live meeting. Or individuals may submit questions and comments to the chair and staff by utilizing the questions function. These will be compiled and included into the hearing at the appropriate time. And due to limitations of the platform, attendees that are accessing the meeting via the telephone. Number at the bottom of the agenda will only be able to listen to the proceedings and will not be able to contribute. Please access the video conference via the link on the agenda, even if you don't have a webcam to participate. So attending tonight are all five planning board members. Also joining us, I believe, the town engineer Paul Starrett and the director of land use Jeff Morissette and town planner Rebecca Chaney. And assistant town planner Matt Salem, who's kind of coordinating the the video conference, so. With that, we'll get moving and see if anyone has anything for open forum. I'll go to the board.
I don't, Darren.
Okay, so nothing from the board, anything from staff for open forum?
Well, Darren, I just want to, oh, I don't know who's there. Is that Paul?
No, that was Jeff, but go ahead.
Um, I just want to let you know that I did get a text from Paul Starrett and he is having some trouble getting on the meeting for technological reasons, so he's on his way.
Okay, great.
Cool, Darren, this is Jeff Morissette. I didn't know if perhaps the board would consider taking up. Three of the general business items A, B, and C out of order. I think those are fairly short. One's a plan endorsement, a bond release, and a request for a minor modification. I know we have some significant public hearings tonight, and I know there may be some people for that, so I don't know if you're willing to consider that request.
Yeah, absolutely. I think. That makes sense because they should be hopefully pretty quick and. They have people waiting around for a few hours or even hour to do that, so. Definitely will do that.
Thank you.
Anything else from from open forum? How about from the audience?
Let me look, Darren. Um, I do not see anything.
Oh. I was gonna say. In our packet, we have a. Some letters from the state that the town has received a grant through what street, open streets or something. Or putting in sidewalks. Around Abbott School. So Mike Bonifant, I don't know if you know more about it than I do. But I think this is.
Oops.
Abbott School Pedestrian Improvement Project has been approved for funding at the amount of $105,000. So that's great. Anyway, that's it.
Actually, the letter, it does talk highly of Paul. And the application that was sent in was a pretty competitive process, so it was it was nice that we got that that grant, and I'm sure he'll be put to good use.
Yep.
Awesome. All right, cool. So as Jeff requested, I think rather than jump into our public hearing items, let's let's start off with a few general business items. The first one being general business item A. PB 2013, which is 15 Chamberlain Road and an unnumbered parcel, and that's basically the request for endorsement of final subdivision plan, so. I'll turn it over to staff there and, you know, we 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 saw these 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 folks in a while back and. I guess we're now just endorsing the final plan set.
That's correct, Darren. This is Rebecca Cheney. So it was earlier this year that the board approved a two lot subdivision. And you may recall that this was unusual in this in that it didn't create, there was no subdivision roadway created. It was basically an A and R with reduced frontage. So they have, the applicant has fulfilled the requirements of your decision prior to plan endorsement. So we've reviewed the plans. There is a conspicuous note on the plan stating that there is no. Covenant or bond required because they're not creating any subdivision roadway, so the the town will not be holding any money. For completion of any road work, but. I have the milers in the office, and so if you all want to come in this week sometime, if you have time, then they can be signed and I'm I can answer any questions if you have any.
Great, I will see you tomorrow to do that.
Okay.
Well, I guess general question, so Rebecca and Jeff, are you guys in the office pretty much regular hours now?
Uh, more or less, yes, one or the other of us is. Jeff will be on vacation. For the next weekend, week and a couple days, so he won't be around, but I will be.
All right, cool.
Yeah.
All right, great. Cool, so that that one's all set.
Can you vote to endorse? Can someone make a motion to endorse?
Yeah, I'll move that we endorse the the plan set in PB 2013, the definitive subdivision plan for 15 Chamberlain Road and an unnumbered parcel. The plan set dated February 10th of 2020, I guess.
Yep.
Is that right? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
Second. All right, motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, I say I say aye, Dylan.
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right, Bob?
Aye.
All right, great. All right, we'll see you to sign those, Rebecca. The second, let's go to our second general business item, item B, which is PB 1903. Bluebird Estates Jenny Richards Road, a request for release of the remaining bond monies. This was a situation where the road was was brought up to standards and. Approved as a public way, what, the last, at the at the most recent town meeting, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And this is a a request for release of the remaining bond.
That's exactly right, yep. So all the roadwork has been done, engineering is happy with it. It was accepted at town meeting, and they're just looking to get the last of the bond money that the town is holding.
Great. Any questions from the board on this one?
I will move that we grant the release of the performance bond for PB 1903. Definitive subdivision for Bluebird Estates and Jenny Richards Road. Stations eight plus zero zero to seventeen plus ninety four point seven, which was submitted July 20th of 2020. In the amount of $25,000, $25,038 and three cents plus any accrued interest.
Could be from station zero plus zero zero, not eight plus zero zero.
No.
Is it?
Yeah.
You're right, you're right, sorry. It's two different bonds, I apologize.
Yep. All right. All right, motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of releasing the bond, say aye, Dylan.
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, Rebecca, do you need a signature on that or anything too?
I need just one from you, Darren.
Okay, I'll take so I'll come down.
Okay.
All right, cool. Then our third item under general business, item C is Lakeside Meadows. It's a request to modify the previously approved conditions of approval related to water quality testing. You know, this has been got, you know, this subdivision's been around now for a while. They've got some 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 data they can look at. And they're looking to change the schedule of the water, the water testing, so. That is the deal. Rebecca, anything further on that one?
Um, not really, covered most of it. So the resident, as Darren says, the residents of Lakeside Meadows, they're looking for a modification to a condition of approval that was contained in an OSRD approval. That the board granted in 1994. And the condition, as Darren says, relates to water quality testing of the wells on the site. And it had been conditioned to be, they had been conditioned to be tested for certain items on a biannual basis. And the Board of Health and the Water Commission had made this a requirement of the planning board decision or had requested that it be made a part of the planning board decision. So after a lot of data collection and analysis and review. The Lakeside Meadows representatives got approval in July from the Board of Health to reduce the requirements. Of what they test and how often they test, and then the Board of the Board of Water Commissioners are meeting on the fifth of this month. And they will review the same. It's anticipated that they will vote in the affirmative to reduce their requirements. And because the requirement is contained in a planning board. Decision, this board has to vote to modify the condition. And if you do that, you first have to make a finding that the request is a non substantial change. So you need to make make a finding and then take a vote.
All right, is that, let me ask you this, though, if to say we we find it non substantial and we vote on it. And the Water Commissioners decide, well, wait, you know, we don't want this to to happen. Would they, would they be able to hold it up? I don't want to step on their toes. Like, we did see a letter, you know, from the Water Commissioner, I believe. You know, approving the change. Or again, I, you know. I would, I would like to approve it, but if if the Water Commissioners feel it's not the right step, then, you know.
Well, you make a good point. I guess in some ways it may be putting the cart before the horse, but I, I mean, I do believe from conversations I've had, and this has been, this has been a long time. Conversation between the Lakeside Meadows folks and the Board of Health folks and. The Water Commissioners, so I feel I would obviously will not speak for the Water Commissioners, but I feel fairly confident that this they will to approve the change.
Could we, Darren? Contingent upon approval by the Water Commissioners?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and Jeff is waiting to say something, so.
What a job.
That was it, Darren. You could, you could vote, this is Jeff Morissette, you could vote. Subject to satisfactory approval by the Board of Water Commission.
Yeah, that's great.
Which we'll have an answer shortly.
All right, that makes sense to me. Board, any other comments from the board? Kate, I see your hand up.
Yeah, so I read the decision from nineteen ninety four, eighty four, whatever. And it looks to me that. The only thing that needs to be modified. Section. Six.
Yep.
And we we don't have to change anything about the type of things being tested for. Except maybe we remove VOCs, I think. But the only thing that we need to change in here is the testing frequency, is my understanding. Because it's in the in the decision, it just states that the Board of Health will determine what what needs to get tested for. Over.
Okay.
So. So like in item six. Which is on page two forty three of our packet. At the very, very bottom of that page, it says that they will, that the association will be. The testing. On land within the subdivision and on. Or in early April and early October of each year, so. I would move that we change in early April and early October of each year to every. Eighteen to twenty four months at the direction of the Board of Health. Over. Is that, is that what Rebecca, is that what you're saying we need to change?
Yes, I mean, the Board of Health did enumerate a number of. Compounds and chemicals and things that they are. Some of which they're going to eliminate the test, the requirement to be tested for, but I think you make a good point, Kate, that it is contained in their discretion in that condition, so. The I think the timing works if you do, if you do, as Kate has suggested.
Right, and still, and still subject to the approval of the Water Commissioners.
Correct, yeah.
Sorry about that. Oh, and I, oh, yeah. Injection with Water Commission, and I would also.
Political.
On on the following page. The the top paragraph, if you go up three lines. Test show would be conducted for phosphate nitrates. And so remove tannic and other organic acids and phenol. So strike those words. Because it that would keep along with any other pollutants being necessary by the Board of Health.
All right, do we need to change the wording of the original, Rebecca, or just change to amend the?
The OSRD. I mean, I will work, I will write something up that will be shared with all various departments and the who are involved in this and. The Lakeside Meadows folks, and those specifics I will work in. I think what you all need to do is just take a vote to amend the timing and then. Because the Board of Health has already taken a vote or made some determinations about what chemicals will and will not be tested for, I can just include that in the decision, but. At this moment, I don't have them listed out, and I don't necessarily think that that's something that you all need to do.
Okay, great.
Well, I'm just thinking, because phenols and other pollutants. And tannic acids are explicit in here, that whatever you write up needs to include them.
Okay, noted.
All right, Mike, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, Mike is wondering, it says eighteen to twenty four months. Should we say something like at a minimum every twenty four months? I mean, I wonder why that's six months, you know, eighteen to twenty four, every two years? I don't know, it just seemed. I guess it's not that big of a deal, but I like to tighten things like that up, you know?
Right?
Well, I could say something like at a minimum of eighteen, not to exceed twenty four, or something like that.
I think that'd be, that'd be fine.
That's great.
Yeah, and to note that in the following paragraph, it says it's necessary, the frequency of testing may be modified by the Board of Health.
Okay. Anything, Bob?
Yeah, so I had a question. I think I'd like to hear from the Board of Health and the Water Commissioners on that testing interval. With the previous, the the specificity of it was that we could see the seasonal variations. And my concern here is by going to an eighteen to twenty four variable testing period. Whether or not you're actually going to be able to, from a scientific perspective. Seasonal.
We can turn on.
Somebody was had a mic on.
Yeah, I think someone's not muted.
Are you hearing me?
Yep, go ahead.
So my only question is, is by going to this. Non repetitive yearly or every six months, whether or not that's going to hurt the scientific ability of the Water Commissioners. Or the Board of Health to see the differences from seasonal variations.
Right, I would hope they would, I mean, the Board of Health already approved it. I would hope that the Water Commissioners would take that into account as well.
I would hope.
Yeah.
That's the nice thing about the eighteen month cycle is that you will. Once, one time will be the spring, the next time will be the fall.
Something, but yeah, right now with this, I mean, you could. You could make it so you could, you'd have to wait several years to see what the difference is from a seasonal perspective.
Right, I I would ask, I mean, Rebecca, if there's a way that we could, you know. You know, the water, the Water Commissioners are meeting the fifth. You know, could they, could they consider that, or was that a question that we could, you know, ask them? There is, you know, would the eighteen months affect? You know, the. The analysis from their perspective.
And I'm happy to, I'm happy to ask that and get that information. I guess the question for you maybe is, do you want, would you prefer to wait? And consider this after the the Board of Water Commissioners has taken their vote and done their review? I mean, if they've done their review but have taken their vote. And maybe have some of these questions answered, or would you like to just proceed on Jeff's suggestion that should they? Should the Water Commissioners vote in the affirmative? That is what you would, that would be the basis of your decision tonight.
I would say the latter, if the board's amenable to that, but I guess we can ask everybody what they think. Dylan?
I'm okay voting tonight, but I don't, you know, I I think Bob raised an interesting question about that seasonality. So I don't know how that affects what we want to do with the language of the eighteen to the twenty four months thing. Because it sounds like we're, you know, with 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 what Mike proposed, which I liked. It feels like we're giving them the option to kind of, you know, pick a window that's between eighteen and twenty four months, so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, that that's the only, I mean, I guess that's that sounded to me like based on the dialogue. The only open question is, would they want us to say, do it every eighteen months? That way you get an April and an October cycle in there.
Well, how about we, I mean, my recommendation. I'm sorry, I'm actually interrupting. Go ahead, go go board members, I'm sorry, got distracted.
All right, so, all right, Kate, well, no, Rebecca, what's your, what's your recommendation as we talk about it?
Well, just that if you have open, if you have questions. And there are some health implications with this, then, you know, I don't, I don't think there's any harm in waiting, getting the answers, getting the questions answered, and then.
All right.
Considering this again at a future meeting.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing urgent about this. They're not going to be changing their testing cycle, I think, in the next week or two, so. You know, if everybody's.
Darren?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, this is Jeff. I don't know if I could just chime in one second. I think, I believe that this condition was originally at the request of. The Board of Water Commissioners with their Water Department. And the Health Department back in the day, so they're the ones that asked for this condition. And they're the ones that have been monitoring this over the years. Yeah, I don't know that, you know, if they're comfortable with it. You know, I don't know.
Can't hear what you're saying, I'm listening.
Yeah. Yeah. Basically. You're saying we should probably, if we vote to approve, subject to their approval, and we should be all set.
I would think so, but that's up to the board. It screams of a condition that was put in place. That they requested to impose, and they're the ones monitoring it, and they're the ones checking the water quality, and if if they're comfortable with it. I don't know, I don't think it's reckless to say that, you know, maybe we're comfortable with it too. But it's just for the board's consideration.
All right, so. Kate, I. Kate, what's your thought? You rather, would you rather vote tonight or wait to get more information and hear it again our next meeting?
Well, do you want that we that we direct staff to modify paragraph six of these order of conditions to change the. Frequency and the list of core sampling analyte. Based on direct, based on recommendations from. Water Commissioners and Board of Health. That would be my recommendation, because personally, I don't think eighteen months is too bad, because things. That would get the seasonality and. These are things that will change slowly with time as they build up, so I don't think it's. With the over twenty testing that you're gonna, you don't need that as frequent as it's done now.
Right, I'm with you on that, so. Bob and Mike, any thoughts either way?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Good.
But I would like, I just want to pose that question to him, just making sure that that's been factored in.
Yeah, no, good, it's a good question.
No, I agree, seasonality is important.
All right, so is there a motion then to? You know, approve, I guess, we have to, what, deem this change non substantial?
Yeah.
Yeah, make a finding. Or make a determination that it's not substantial.
And you need that in the form of a of a vote, Rebecca?
Yes, please.
All right, so then I I guess I'll move that. And there's no item number here, but so with regard to the Lakeside Meadows development, I will move that this board. Find that modifying section six with regard to. The frequency and nature of the groundwater testing be considered a. Non substantial change to the overall planning board decision.
All right, two second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye, so. That's now, now Rebecca, do you need another motion to? You know, approve the change, approve the frequency or no?
Well, now you need to vote to approve the request to modify.
Okay.
So I'll move that we approve the modification of section six in the. Special permit for an OSRD subdivision for the Lakeside Meadows development. And to give staff the ability to modify the language contained in section six regarding the frequency and nature of the groundwater testing based upon the Board of Health and the Water Department's decisions.
Great.
Second.
All right, any other further discussion? Those in favor? Say aye, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right, I say aye. Great.
We're up next.
I'll sit on that one.
Yes.
All right, cool. All right, so that, let's go back then now to, we'll go back to our regular scheduled programming, which is. Do our public hearing. And the first one we have here is for PB nineteen twenty three. It's continuation for seventy three Nutting Road, Wendell Place. So these folks have been in front of us a number of times. And at our last meeting, we asked staff to put together draft decisions. For the definitive subdivision plan, the special permit for the OSRD and the Stormwater Management Committee. And staff did a great job of putting together pretty comprehensive. Draft decisions, and in the in the interim, also has been in discussions with the applicant. So. That being said, I guess everybody's had a chance to review those decisions. My understanding, there's still a few items, a few. Items that need clarification between staff and the applicant, and I'll, I'll Rebecca. Kind of give us a quick overview and catch us up.
Okay, sounds good. And before we start, I just want to mention to people who are out there listening that someone is out there with their, I think they're on a phone and they're not muted. And there is some background noise, so if that person is hearing me and can mute themselves, that would be appreciated. So as Darren said, we did. Develop or draft three decisions for your review. They are works in progress, and so we did have a conversation with the applicant's engineer and attorney today to clear up some of the questions. That were. Related to issues of clarity and just some sort of administrative kind of things. But there were a handful of items or three items, maybe not quite a handful. That we're hoping to discuss with the board and the applicant tonight and get some clarity so that we can. Come back to you at a later meeting with clean decisions for you to take a vote on, so we're hoping that this could just be a working meeting. To go over some of the items, so. The three outstanding items. Um, the three outstanding items, as we understand them, are. Um, the no disturb zone. The sidewalks and how to handle the fee and lieu, and then the, um, the OSRD required finding regarding the variety of housing type and price. So, I, I think Darren, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we would go through these each in kind.
Yeah.
Um, so if we wanna start with the no disturb zone. Um.
Yeah. And so.
Go ahead.
Just so I was gonna say, so the, for the board and the applicant, so, you know, these are kind of the three major. Points of clarification. So we can obviously discuss any other ones that, you know, the board has found or any questions outside of that. But to keep things kind of aligned, if we can, if we can focus on these three first to kinda keep it in that order. Um, you know, we'll go to the, we'll go to the applicant for each one, and then the staff and, or it's staff and the board. And let's try to hammer out each one if we can, and then we'll move through these three major items, and then. Any other questions we have at that point, we should be able to handle those as well.
Okay, that sounds great. Um, so to start with the no disturb zone, um, so the tree line that's shown on the plan, on the subdivision plan. Um, it corresponds to the limit of clearing that was used in the stormwater calculations. And in order to keep that intact. Um, and to maintain a vegetated buffer to adjacent properties, we're waiting on a plan that labels. So we received this plan that you can see on the screen last week, um, and what we're, what we'd like to see is a plan that shows that. No clearing zone or no disturb zone on every lot, or at least the ones that are sort of in that, um, horseshoe. And to have it labeled as such. Um. And the que- the sort of the outstanding question is. Where the line is gonna be? If it's gonna be a straight line, or it's gonna be a curved line? And how that line will be delineated? If it's gonna be iron pins, if it's gonna be aluminum, you know, circular markers on trees? If it's gonna be wooden markers in the ground with placards? Um, so that is. I think that's everything on that question. Um, and I do, we'll just add that at the last meeting. The question of how, what legal instrument to use to ensure that homeowners are aware of any restrictions associated with a no disturb zone was brought up. Um, Mr. Duchesne had, had, um, offered an easement, and then we had some further conversations. And staff and the applicant thought that maybe a restrictive covenant. Um, would work. Each lot's deed, it would be part of it, the HOA docs. Um. So I guess if, I'll leave it at that, if I'm happy to answer questions or, um. Doug or Matt? Take it away if they want to, or I'll leave it to Darren how you wanna proceed.
Yeah, if you wanna, uh, you know, applicant, do you guys, you guys wanna, uh, chime in on this one, on the no disturb zone?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, um, it, it's my remembrance that the, the discussion of this no disturb zone really. Came about in two, in two ways. First, um, as you know. Um, we have now been required to provide plans that define the. Limit of work, the foundation sizes and the plan sizes, so that the town can be assured. That our drainage design is adequate to what is actually built. And so we've had to show, um, our, our expected worst case scenario in terms of clearing and footprints. And impervious areas, which we've, which we've done. Um, and of course, uh, there is now a requirement that we will have to show an individual plan for each of these lots. Um, to prove that we've in fact, um, built it in conformance with this plan, uh, that was used for the stormwater. Um, there was also a discussion that. Those lots along, and I, I'm sorry, it's hard for me to see, but the, the lots along. Uh, Wendell Place, starting at, at Nutting, so one, two, three, four, five lots. Um, actually abut an adjacent residential lot. So there was a discussion that perhaps, um. We should make it more solid, that that no disturb zone or that, uh, cut line. Would not be disturbed, uh, so as to not only meet our stormwater requirements, but also to provide. Uh, a buffer to our neighbors, and we felt that the logical way to do that was to just establish the tree line. As the no cut line, and therefore we would satisfy both. Requirements, um, we're certainly agreeable to do that. Um, and then the question came up, well, how do we mark them? How do we make sure that the homeowners know? And what we've discussed with staff and also have recommended previously. Uh, is that we would suggest as part of the covenants and restrictions document. That covers the entire subdivision, we would include this no cut zone, uh, as a covenant. Uh, that, that would prohibit, uh, anyone from cutting that. Uh, that covenant, that restriction is, will, uh, by law, uh, be made part of the deed. Uh, it will be referenced in the deed, uh, so that no one could ever say they weren't given notice. Uh, further all, furthermore, we have suggested, uh, providing a notice to, uh, potential buyers. Of these covenants and of these restricted areas, so that even prior to deciding to buy. Potential sellers know of it. Um, if they then go on to a purchase and sales agreement, well, we can certainly reference it there. And then again, lastly, in the conveyance, it would be, uh, listed in the deed. I, I, I'm not sure if there's any other legal way, uh, to better notify and to make something, uh, rock solid. Uh, but that's what we would suggest. The discussion also went to say that. Um, that we were required to produce a plan, um, identifying this as part of our plan set, so what we did. And I believe this plan is a representation. Um, we've, we've marked that tree line in red, uh, and we would propose to make everything on the other side of that tree line. Uh, the no disturb zone. Um, staff has suggested or recommended or asked. That perhaps we could come up with more of a straight line, uh, representation of that no. Cut zone, so that. It would be easier to recreate this or to recognize it on the ground. Uh, it would certainly require less signage, um, if we had a straight line. Uh, we wouldn't have to worry about all the bump outs, but, uh, quite honestly, we didn't, I, I, we, we're having a little trouble understanding. You know, where do we draw the straight line? Uh, if we draw it. Sort, sort of parallel to the back lot line, uh, we're gonna end up cutting the little, um. You know, the, the little outcroppings between the lots. And if we run a straight line across the ends of those outcroppings. Um, now we've essentially made the entire backyards, uh, non-disturbed, so. Uh, I don't think we have a disagreement on our willingness to identify and provide that on a plan that. It shows it as non-disturbed or no cut zone. We have no issues with providing all of the legal. Um, notices and, and, and deed documents, and, um, I'm happy to provide that draft language as part of the decision, which. Quite frankly, it's already in there. Uh, but I guess we wanted to figure out, how, how do we draw the line? What is the best way to represent that? On a plan, uh, without, you know. Essentially taking away more of our buildable area, but at the same time. Um, making that non-disturbed area easily recognizable and easily recreatable if there's an issue. Matt, I, is that pretty much sum that up in terms of the technical issues surrounding this?
Yeah, no, and I, I agree a hundred percent that we have no issues with. Generating a plan and going through it with staff, um, and I think we were hoping to get the guidance from the board. I think looking at the lots, um, one through five, the lower left-hand corner. Give or take, those are about thirty feet off the lot line, um, for, for those lots, for example. Um, lot one doesn't have any, um. Um, trees preserved, but lots two, three, and four. You know, I just envisioned a thirty-foot no cut or a no disturb zone, excuse me. And then on lot five, the uppermost one, you know, that looks like it's closer to forty feet. Um, and we would obviously try and mimic the tree line as close as possible. Um, but ultimately, what would end up happening is. We would try to balance out some of those areas where the, the tree line bumps out, um, and or dips into the. Um, to the other side of the straight line. And we would work with staff to do that.
And, and Matt, we would propose to do that as well on the other side.
Um. We'd do it on all the lots. Yeah, um, sixteen, seventeen, or it's sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Those three lots on the right-hand side.
That would constitute all lots that abut other residential lots.
Right, and then I think the second part of that. Um, I appreciate that, important, and then the second part that Rebecca brought up was. You know, the part on the plan is one thing, and, and Doug, thanks for the, you know. Offering to put in the deed and everything, in the covenant and everything. Then in terms of the physical. Property, how is that gonna be delineated? So is it gonna be, you know, do you envision doing the wooden stake with the placard on it?
I'm not on it.
We would, um, we, we've got a lot of experience with this in working with Conservation Commission, and in fact, as, as part of this decision. Um, we've talked about how we're gonna demarcate the. Um. Open space, and we've agreed that we would do what is typically required, and that is pin. Pin the corners and, um, provide some placards. You know, they're the placards that Conservation Commission has established.
Do you hear that?
And they found it either on a post or on a tree. Um, and they either delineate, delineate an open space as they would for the open space. Or they can delineate a no disturb, no touch, no entry, whatever language the board would prefer. But we would suggest, um. Um, utilizing those, uh, along that no disturb line, and. To the extent we can put them on the trees themselves, in some ways that makes them more effective. Um, to the extent that it's necessary to put it on a post. Uh, we could do that as well. Uh, Matt, did you ever suggest in with respect to the, sort of where the lot lines? Uh, uh, meet between, between, um. The, between the lots, um, is that generally recommended to be a post? I know one of the things we wanna avoid are pins. Cause we're gonna have so many pins all over this site with the roads. And the open space and, and, and the drainage and everything else that needs to be delineated. We're just not sure whether a set of metal pins driven into the ground are gonna do anything in terms of, uh, visual notice or a boundary. And they're certainly gonna confuse the heck out of people when they're trying to figure out which boundary pins are there for what, so. We do wanna look to posts and placards. Which again is the system that has been employed by conservation in defining no, no touch or no entry zones.
Right, okay.
Matt, anything to add to that?
No, I agree. I think typically. The post acts as a good visual barrier, they're four-foot. Posts, they go two feet in the ground, two feet out of the ground. They're brown, they kinda blend in with the, the, the wood scape behind it, um, they do have a little.
I can see that.
That says no disturb. Um. And I, I visualize that, I just, to give a quick summary. And don't quote me on the exact numbers, but. To kinda reiterate Doug's, we have. Roughly about seventeen iron pins just to, to, to demarcate the open space parcels. We have twenty-one iron pins to demarcate the easements. We have about thirty to thirty-four bounds marking at the right of way. And we have twenty markers in between iron pins to mark the open space parcels. Now, in and above that, we're talking three or four wooden posts on the back of each of these lots. You're talking another seventy markers, so I mean, to me, the cumulative, it just seems like. When is enough enough, and I, I, and I agree with Jeff and staff in that pins tend to stay there forever, and. But at the same time. It's just seems like a hundred and fifty monuments out here seems aggressive to me. So our preference is, is a placard or something more visual like a sign.
Yeah, I think, uh, to the average homeowner, the pin doesn't mean much, you know, you see a. Pin in the ground, if you have the placard, you know, okay, I'm not supposed to cut here, so. Alright, let's go to, uh, let's go to the board for some thoughts. I'll start with Dylan.
So we're just talking with regard to.
No disturb zone.
The no disturb zone. Uh, I'm fine with some sort of, you know, aluminum tag or something put on the trees, especially on the, uh. The no cut line as it's proposed. Um. I guess, uh, I have a question regarding the, the no cut line lots two through five. It sort of makes sense, and, uh, and Doug, I can empathize with where do you draw the line, and I think, you know, that the line you proposed looks good to me, so I would stick with that. On the other side, though, the line's kind of all over the place, and like with lot sixteen, I mean, o- outside of the wet area. I mean, essentially, there's no, there's no no cut there at all, other than sort of where it starts to go probably downhill towards the wetlands, right? Um, and then lot seventeen has, you know, sort of this abnormally shaped no cut line. Is there, is there some rhyme or reason to why that lot? Line is drawn that way? It's just, it's just very inconsistent with on the other side, where you sort of have these bump outs on the property line between two, two parcels, right? And then otherwise, it's kind of generally following kind of a straight line, you know, not exactly parallel, but it's kind of. Running along the back of the property line. On the other side, it's kind of all over the place. Is there a reason for that?
Well, I think, and Matt, you can weigh in on this, but I think when we were looking at lots two, three, four, and five. I mean, quite frankly, they're deep enough that we could afford to provide a reasonable backyard of, you know, say thirty feet. Um, and then that still left us some room. If you go on the other side. Um, of course, on the first lot, uh, on, on Nutting, which is the one directly adjacent to the house behind us. Um, that lot's deep enough, and you can see we carved off that whole triangle so as to give that house. Um, a, a, as much buffer as we could, or much no disturb. Then when you move up, and I'm sorry, my plan is so small, I can't read the numbers, but I think it's seventeen is the next one up.
Yep.
You could see that if we, if we maintained a, a, a thirty-foot, uh, no disturb, which is. Actually reflective of the building line, the dashed building line. Uh, the house would literally have no backyard at all, so we kind of bumped it out right at the backyard. And then came back in, and then when you go up further, um, again, you know, that, that house is so far back. And it, it abuts the wetland buffer, that we really didn't see the backyard of that house impinging on. Either of those other houses up on Nutting Road, and that lot's pretty shallow, so much like lot sixteen, or. Again, I'm sorry, seventeen.
Yep.
Sixteen, we wanted to give them that thirty or forty feet, and, um. And, and, and that would work. I, I, in looking at it, I, I certainly would be willing, uh, to talk to our clients to see if. With respect to lot sixteen, we might consider pulling things back a little from the rear line, more towards the building line. But it's hard with seventeen to give them any kind of a backyard. And, and maintain that thirty-foot no disturb along the back there.
Got it.
And again, that's pretty far up.
Yep.
No, and I think one thing this plan doesn't show is grading, so on seventeen, there's some grading challenges. To the, to, as you're looking at this plan, the back right corner of the house, where there's a hill that goes up behind it.
Okay.
So there's some limited grading there that we were able to. To quickly tie off as kind of quick as possible to minimize our impacts, but then. We pushed it out almost directly behind the house to try and give them a level yard there, so. We were kinda working with. What Doug was saying, trying to give some flat backyards and areas. The upper right, but we were in the, behind the house. Um. So a lot of this, guys, it, this grading is kind of impacting that tree line.
Right. Alright. Yeah, I, I get the point too, where you could, the, uh. Houses on Nutting are a little further away from those seventeen and sixteen or eighteen. Okay. Alright, so Dylan, anything, anything else for these guys?
Nope, I'm good.
Alright, Kate?
Yeah, I, I appreciate. The thought of following, it sounded as though you wanted to follow the existing tree line or something. Um. But then I, I'm with the engineering department where simplicity is preferred. Um.
Blessed are you among women, Kate.
Pardon?
Blessed are you among women, Kate.
I'm not a typical, so like, if we look at the houses on Lady Constance Way. Um, starting with where it is on Nutting Road, I, I would recommend keeping that. where the red line ends at Nutting Road, and then doing a straight line up to lot seventeen. And I appreciate what Doug said about a backyard. But part of my problem is that we don't, we are not following the open space or the, yeah, the OSRD requirements about the buffer for all houses. And so we had talked about using the no-cut, no-disturbed zone as, uh, like, uh, in lieu of having the the common land at the, behind the houses. So I would propose maybe not going to the, to the thirty-foot rear setback, but maybe going to twenty feet or something, and then just following that all the way up to the wetlands. And then, because that would make a straight line, of course, engineering would have to determine, does it retain the, the same amount of no disturb that it has using the current? So have it, have it go from Nutting Road, a straight line on lot eighteen up to maybe twenty, where twenty feet in from the back line, or of seventeen, fifteen to twenty feet, whatever, and then continuing straight fifteen to twenty feet from seventeen and sixteen, and then follow the, um, the wetland buffer like it does now. And it, it sounds as though this also has to happen for all of the lots, not just these lots in front, that you have to have no disturbed zones for all the other lots as well. So I don't know if there's a way to, I haven't thought about lot fifteen and all around the top of it down to lot six, whether or not something similar could be done. And then on the other side, start lot one, five, lot five, lot five, I would start it wherever you want to have it end at lot six, and then a straight line, it looks as though that would be, right now, it's been about fifty feet, whether or not you still need that, but pin it at the top part of lot five, draw a straight line down maybe so that it would end in lot four, where lot four intersects lot three at the, at the thirty-foot rear lot line, and then continue straight down to the bottom of lot two, following the, um, the, um, thirty-foot rear setback. And then, um, I don't know, I guess you didn't want to have anything in lot one because of the funky shape, and you wouldn't have any kind of a backyard. But that would be my recommendation. That, that way you can, if you can have something that you, at the side lot, side lot lines, as, as primary markers. And maybe you wouldn't need to have markers, like, you wouldn't need to have markers in the middle of each lot or something, I don't know. But anyway, that's my thought, to, to make it a straight, a straighter line as possible for ease. And then if, if the developer wishes to keep those trees where they, you currently have the bump outs, that's their decision to keep them, but it, at least it's not a requirement for the homeowners in the future. Over.
So Mr. Chair, Paul Stare, Town Engineer, learning from personal experience, they're building a seven-lot subdivision out behind my apartment right now. And if the objective with the no-clear zone is to block views or to try and keep it as natural-looking, I, I have to say, I'm, I'm paying attention to like six-inch silver maple trees that I never noticed before, because they do have a, a blocking effect. So the type of trees in that clear zone is an issue. The size of the trees is an issue. And the, you know, the type of trees, you have these big, tall pine trees that don't have any canopy until you're seventy feet up. So those are issues that, you know, are, you know, are important to consider.
All right.
As opposed to just a, a random line on a, on a plan.
Right. I guess, I'll go, I'll go to, uh, the rest of the board here too, so, thanks Kate, Mike?
Well, so, uh, well, I think it'd be certainly a lot easier to do a straight line. I think it would maximize the amount of. Whoever's on the cell phone, kindly mute your phone, please. Um, I, I think that it would maximize the amount of, of, of space that would be preserved the way they have laid it out, uh, as it is. So I, I think that while it may cause some issues with delineating it, and, and possibly, you know, for engineering to, to, to track it, I think it may be the, the best alternative. Um, I also had a question. I know in lawns, they, they use, I think, a, a post and a, uh, a sign. I don't know if Mr. Waterman or if Shane can comment on that. I don't know if that's something to be talked about instead of the pins. I mean, those are visible, and you know where those lines are, and where you should be or shouldn't be. Um, I, I don't know if they, in the test of time, but you still see them in lawns, and I'm, I'm not sure how old that subdivision is. Right.
Well, Ms. Chairman, if I could answer that, that is in fact what we're proposing. A combination of posts with the placards, and in some instances, the placards right on the tree that defines the tree line, a very effective way to do it.
Good, great.
All right, Mike?
Thank you, yeah. I just want to comment on that. Because Trailside Way is behind us, and that's about twenty years old, and a fence was put in to delineate conservation land, and after twenty years, it's falling apart. So if we want to do something like wooden posts, then I, I would recommend that there's something in a, a condition that the homeowners association document includes a requirement that they maintain those posts in perpetuity, so if one.
I think it's a great idea, Kate.
If one gets destroyed, they have to replace it.
Yeah.
All right, that makes sense.
This is Jeff. Can I, one quick comment? I think there's some misunderstanding about the conversation we have today. So if you look at lot two, for instance, all I was suggesting, if you look at that red line that they've already drawn, is that we were looking for math to put to that red line, so it would be retracable in the future. So it looks like three lines could define that so-called no disturbs. And three lines for lot three with a, a fourth line that would be shared between lots three and four. You know, we're just looking for math and, and straight line work. We're not looking to really change or have a, a single straight line going across the back of four lots. We just want math to define it. That's all I, that was only my intention.
All right, so that, so, so Jeff, that would be even the red line on here right now, even if that was defined as the no disturb zone, that would be, you know, satisfaction, satisfactory to you?
Me personally, looking at the left side, I would say yes, because if we have that, that line work in with the final CAD file that we get, that's something that our GIS coordinator could use down the road as we get updated aerials. It'd be much easier to perhaps, through aerial photography, track to see if there are, you know, incursions, or if there's areas that have been cleared. Like a tree line, you don't know, I don't know if they locate, field-located front of the trunk of the tree, the drip edge, it can be a big variation between the line work that you see and the effective tree line. So to me, a straight line with math is simpler and preferred for this purpose of monitoring.
Okay. All right.
All right, Jeff, I'm, I'm sorry I misunderstood that.
And I think we'll develop a plan that's going to, going to be a combination of both. I think we will try and simplify it in some areas. And then we will follow and try to mimic the tree line that's depicted here. So I think the, the plan that ultimately you see or vote on will be probably a, um, a little bit of both.
Okay. And I think, you know, I'm, I'm kind of in the, I agree with Mike in that kind of moved now, but instead of a straight line, I like the bump outs here, like especially up the left side, because you're kind of maintaining more trees than you would if you just had a straight line, so you know, maximizing as much as we can for a boundary is, I'm, I'm in favor of that. Anything else, anything else from the board on the, on the no disturb zone? It sounds like, you know, in terms of the physical marking, we'll be able to, you know, the applicant's got a good idea what we're looking for there. And then as terms of the, uh, you know, the, the no disturb zone itself, you know, clarification on the plan, and then taking our comments into, in consideration as well.
Ms. Chairman, we appreciate the comments, and we'll do just that. We'll produce a plan for staff review that will integrate your comments and suggestions, and I do believe we can come up with a plan that will, uh, will be satisfactory.
Great.
I just have one comment. When I was reading the draft decisions, I would like to have something, a finding in lieu, you're on, please mute your phone. That, uh, I would like a finding in, uh, the decisions, maybe in the open space decisions about the no, no disturb zone, that, um, that we are treating them in the same way that we would treat, I'm not saying it properly, I have to think about the wording, but because we are allowing the applicant to not extend the requirement for the buffer behind houses for those lots, lots one through five, and eight, and sixteen to eighteen, that we are treating the, um, no disturb zones as we would, uh, um, the buffer to separate, um, the houses and provide some kind of a, uh, a view buffer between the houses and the abutting property. Because I, I think it's important that we recognize that this is not exactly following what is in the bylaw, but, uh, and that we are making a special case for it here, and that it's not a general thing that we do. Over.
Kate, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a simple question. Kate, could you just clarify for me, what requirement under the open space residential bylaw are we not conforming to?
That every house has to have access to open the hundred-foot buffer. We, we had this discussion the last time. You and I interpret it differently. I appreciate you representing your, uh, your client's interest, and, but I'm representing the town's interest, and I'm trying to uphold the bylaw, as I believe that it is as much as it was intended. Over.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Kate. All right, so, um, I think we've covered the, the no disturbs, and it sounds like pretty much on the same page there. If we can go to, let's move on to our second kind of clarification item, which is the sidewalks. A lot of discussion we've had here about, you know, having a shovel-ready plan prepared by the applicant that'll connect at one, at some point to the Nutting Road Fields. And the applicant also wants to, you know, have a waiver for, you know, sidewalks on only one side of the road, so you know, I guess I'll go back, uh, I'll go to Rebecca, kind of see where we are from staff's perspective, and then I'll go to the applicant.
Sure. Um, so as you mentioned, Darren, the applicant has requested a waiver from the requirement to install sidewalks on both sides of the subdivision roadways. So if the board grants the waivers or the waiver request, you have the discretion to assess a fee in lieu of sidewalk construction. Um, and as you know, the applicant has, has proposed to provide a shovel-ready design for the town for sidewalks from the development to the community fields down the street. They've also proposed to install a sidewalk between the two subdivision roadway openings along Nutting Road. Um, and the cost estimates that were provided for the sidewalks and the other, the waiver requests need to be updated, so I'm not certain of the numbers we're working with in terms of, um, mitigation, but, and maybe Matt Waterman has an update for us on that. But the board does have discretion about what else, if anything, they want to require for fee and lieu. And I guess I'll turn it back to you.
Great. All right, so, uh, I'll go to the applicant on this one. Uh, maybe some clarification around, the waiver and the, the request there, and then we can go for, we'll have a discussion with the board.
Sure. Ms. Chairman, you'll recall that, um, some number of meetings ago, uh, we had an extensive discussion regarding, um, the waivers, some of the waivers, um, and what we would propose to do in lieu of, um, the waivers. Um, and, and it was a, a more comprehensive discussion than, well, we're waiving a sidewalk that costs X dollars, and you're going to give us a design in lieu, uh, that was Y dollars. Um, if you'll recall, um, we talked about our willingness to, in addition to doing that sidewalk design, uh, which I think is quite valuable, uh, we did agree to connect our two roads by building a shorter section of sidewalk uh, between the two roads, so there's a cost associated with that. But you'll also recall, we, we were also discussing at that point the town's preference that we direct, I, and maybe I'm stating this incorrectly, but that we redirect some of the stormwater by placing drains along Nutting and then under Nutting, um, and, and creating an outlet to the wetlands there. Um, that was in our mind, and certainly a, a big part of our discussion, that, you know, that was an additional component of our payment uh, in return for those waivers. Um, and I believe that drainage improvement, which will benefit um, not only our subdivision, but Nutting Road drainage in general, is of significant cost, in fact, probably, um, in and of itself, more than what it would cost us to build that second sidewalk. So I, I, I quite frankly thought at that point that we had, um, reached agreement on that, and that the board was comfortable and happy that we were willing to do those three things in lieu of the waiver. So now an additional discussion of, you know, more money on top of all that i- is a little discerning. Um, and again, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe we talked through this extensively, and the board was in agreement that those three things were a better deal for the town than a second sidewalk on a, on a twenty-four-lot subdivision. But maybe I misinterpreted.
Darren, may I respond to that?
Yes.
This is Rebecca again. I just want to clarify, um, and I don't know if you all remember that, but that conversation happened on the, at the May eighteenth meeting. And all of those items that Doug enumerated were discussed, and the board did make a unanimous, non-binding vote to recommend the, those changes to the plan. Um, and I did review that meeting on Westford Cat, and I do have the minutes in front of me, and I don't, I didn't see, and I don't read here, that there was any conversation about that um, being a trade for having anything to do with the sidewalk waiver. So you are, of course, welcome to throw it into the mix, but I just want to counter the idea that that was something that was confirmed, because in my research about that item, that's not what I discovered. Maybe I misunderstood, but that's what I've, that's what I've seen. Maybe you all recall something differently.
Thanks, Rebecca. That's actually my recollection as well. Doug, thanks for your input there as well, but I think my recollection was the, um, the sidewalk design being part of the waiver. The other parts of it, that, you know, the drainage was really, I thought, more, you know, satisfied the, uh, the plan, the, you know, it's a, it's a. the plan, be, you know, it's a, it's a pretty, you know, drainage has been a big issue since the beginning of discussion on this, on this site. And that was kind of a, you know, a great idea that you guys came up with to mitigate that. But it didn't seem to me to be a trade off in my recollection from the sidewalk. So I, I didn't connect the two of those directly, but uh, I'll go to the board now and, and get everybody's thoughts on that. So Kate, we'll start with you.
Oh, you need to pick on somebody else. No, I, I agree with you that, uh, like the infiltration system overflow is asked to, to, uh, satisfy engineering and make this a workable plan. Um, as for the street width, I don't know. Cause in the staff report, there was something, uh, we're actually going down from 27 feet to 24 feet rather than going from 22 feet up to 24 feet. So, um, I will do my perennial comment about the calculation of the value of sidewalks that I appreciate that it, it, it follows the form G uh, and, and coming up with numbers. But the one thing that's always missing for me is that it does not include the labor cost. Because a sidewalk does require labor. So there is a benefit there as well that they don't have to pay a few people's time to, to build sidewalks. However, long it takes to build a sidewalk. So, um, right now they have the about tw- little over 25,000 that they estimate is the cost saving excluding labor costs. And, um, I'm happy to, to apply the nutting road sidewalk and the, uh, shovel ready design plan as part of the, uh, in lieu of, or, uh, for sidewalks. And my question to the board is that would you then want to have them also pay an additional 10,000 or so into the sidewalk funds? To make up for the, the, uh, the rest of the, um, the, uh, trade off. Over.
All right. Thanks, Kate. Um, kind of my, my thoughts are along the same line. Uh, I'll move on to, uh, Mike.
So just to make sure I understand. So the question is we're, we're looking, they're going to do the shovel ready plan for nothing. And are we deducting that of what would be, we would take in lieu of the second sidewalk? Is that correct?
Yeah. So, yeah, I think, I think basically if you look at, it's around $26,000 that, you know, the applicant could save by not doing the second sidewalk.
Okay.
That they are, but they've agreed to do this shovel ready plan, which costs about $10,000.
Yeah.
And then they've also agreed to, uh, connect the two entrances to, um, subdivision along nutting road, which is a benefit. So that has a cost to it as well. So, you know, it's kind of like, how, how does the board feel? What, what's equitable? Um, if it's $26,000 they're saving, what is, you know, how can we get that equity back?
Understand. So I think that it'll be reasonable, right? So we figure out what the sidewalk plan, shovel ready plan costs, with the additional plan to connect to nothing. And now take that out of whatever savings you're going to get for not doing the second.
That's kind of my thought as well. So, um, but okay. Anything else on that one? Mike?
Nope.
All right, Dylan.
Um, so I had the same recollection, like in fact, when we were talking about the, um, infiltration overflow, you know, I guess I came away from that conversation with the thought that, that this was like a eureka moment between the applicant and town engineering, where they figured out a way to solve a problem that was going to be difficult to solve on the site itself. And not that that was somehow an offset with, for sidewalk money, but, um, I guess the shovel ready plan, Attorney DeShane's is, is between the development Wendell Place and, and the community fields is what we've been talking about, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, as I read this over the weekend, my thought, uh, Darren was, you know, would it, wouldn't it be more valuable to the town if, I, I think there's going to be kids in the subdivision, letting them walk safely down the road to community fields. Absolutely. That's great. Right? But I was trying to think about it in the context of, you know, the town and our need to sort of link other parts of the community with sidewalks. And I was thinking, maybe if we ask them to build the shovel ready plan that goes all the way up to the intersection with depot, for example, right? Or so that at some point when depot has a sidewalk on it, that can be linked in and tied in. And now the folks who live on depot can also, you know, walk the community fields, you know, safely potentially. So I started thinking more in the context of maybe a slight expansion to the shovel ready plan, uh, as opposed to, you know, asking the applicant for additional sidewalk funds. You're, you're already going to have a person in AutoCAD doing the work. Why not just carry that work through to the logical intersection of a street?
Got it. Um, well, I guess, I guess I would say there that if there was, you know, if it was, if we're saying 26,000, you know, between the, the shovel ready plan and the nutting piece, there's, you know, 10,000 left. And that goes in the sidewalk fund, that could be, that could be used for what you're saying.
That's true.
You know, when, when depot gets their sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, rather than specify it, but.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I thought Paul, and maybe, maybe Paul can comment on this. Didn't he comment in one of our last meetings about how we're soon going to have the ability to put down sidewalks, but what we need is these shovel ready plans built and ready, ready to actually build. So my thought was, you know, if we have one being built, well, then I actually, you know, really as I started thinking about it, I was like, well, why not just map out all of nutting? And right, and come up with a shovel ready plan for all of nutting to have a sidewalk. I know Doug just, Doug just sat back like, great, no. But I mean, but honestly, like then you would be able to, eh, eh, complete an entire section of street with a sidewalk when the town has the ability to implement that. So, I don't know. That, that's my thoughts.
Well, just one comment. I think I've input from the sidewalk committee might help on that. You know, a priority, you know, were they rather the cash? Were they rather the plan? You know, maybe we discuss it with.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I just can't give up on the drainage pipe question. And I guess if Mr. Chairman, if you'd let me, I, I, I'd like to ask Mr. Starrett, if our proposed drainage design did not satisfy requirements without that overflow pipe.
I, I, I can answer that, Mr. Chair, but I, I need to have a better understanding of what the objective is. And, and I should also comment, Dylan, that the pedestrian safety committee is going to erect the monument in your honor, just for bringing up the, the idea of making that connection because it will be the single biggest sidewalk network in the town of Westwood. If you get to Plain Road, cause that gets you to Oak Hill Road, which we're going to build. And Oak Hill Road gets you to, uh, Groton Road, and then Russell's Way all the way out to Makepeace. It'd be enormous. But let, let me better understand the question before I answer.
Sure. My, my point is, and at least my understanding was that the, the idea of this overflow pipe was a good one. And it would make for a better design. And would benefit, again, not only our project, but nutting road in general. And that we agreed to do that, not because we weren't meeting the requirements. We could meet the requirements. It's just that it was determined there would be a better way to do it. And, and quite frankly, my clients understood that our agreement or, or are convincing them to spend an additional $30,000 to do that because it was a benefit to the town would certainly be considered as part of our mitigation for this project and the waivers we were requiring. I, I do not remember that overflow pipe being a requirement to meet the stormwater regulations. If, if I'm wrong, that's all I'm asking. Am I wrong? Was that required? Or did that constitute a better design that would be more beneficial to everyone?
So Mr. Chair, um, what, what counsel is saying is that, that the highway superintendent, uh, it through his many, many, many years of pragmatic experience i- has led him to, to appreciate the value of an overflow. So I, I think Doug is correct to say if, if we went to the Department of Environmental Protection and asked them for some kind of a ruling on whether this is required, then they would have a hard time going through their own regulations and their, their, you know, um, their standards and saying, yes, you must by law put this in. But the highway superintendent through his many years of experience and wisdom has said, we're, we're going to get rain events that are just going to spill out onto all those homes that are there today on the other side of Nutting Road in particular. And, and when we put all this impervious surface, the, the roofs, the driveways, the decks, the many things that, that, um, the applicant wants to build and construct on this now, uh, forested parcel is going to have a result. And that result is going to be, you know, potential flooding. So give me a pipe, the, the highway superintendent asked, that goes to the, the, um, the nearby the, 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 the receiving waters there, the, uh, the Keys Brook or the Kais Brook. And that's, that's where that came from. Could we, could you go to the Supreme Court and make them do that? Probably not the way the regulations are currently listed, written, but pragmatically, that's the right thing to do.
Not saying it's the right thing to do. I'm saying it's a $28,000 thing for us to do.
Right.
And yet the board is saying, well, you're saving 13,000 or 25,000 on sidewalks. You're going to spend 10. And, and by the way, that number is understated. You're going to spend 10 here and you're going to spend five here. We want the difference. I, I don't think we're getting any consideration for the fact that we've agreed to a $28,000 overflow pipe that while is probably the best thing, it was not required. I mean,
Right. Well, I think, and I think Doug, it's, you know, listen, there's not, it's, it's, I think everybody appreciates the, uh, the design. And, you know, it's certainly a, a, a big part of the plan. But I think what people are having trouble doing is connecting the discussion with the sidewalk discussion. It's not, it's just not something that it came up, at least as far as my recollection that great, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to pass the wave, the sidewalks. And by the way, we're going to put in this great pipe. It's more, it wasn't, it wasn't connected in that conversation. So that's, that's kind of where everybody is right now.
Oh, well, I don't, again, I respectfully feel that it was in the context of a bigger, bigger discussion on that we were having with the highway department. And clearly we were talking about the, uh, shovel ready design directly relating to the sidewalk waiver. And we were talking about all those things at the same time. But I, I, you know, I'll defer to the board's interpretation. And then perhaps what I'm saying then is in lieu of requesting additional cash from us on top of what we are proposing to do for sidewalks, I'd ask the board to give us some consideration for the $28,000 that we are doing to create a better design for the, for the drainage, even though it is not legally required.
All right. Great. Well, thank you. That's well noted. Uh, Mike, you had your hand up?
Yeah. Uh, well, hearing, uh, Paul's comments, you know, maybe there should be some consideration. Maybe we say half of, we'll come up with something, right? Give a little bit of mitigation. If they are going to better the, the, the drainage that's going to eventually affect nothing in the houses across the street, you know, maybe there is something that we, we should do uh, along those lines. And, you know, maybe figure out what, what that would be. And just throwing that out there. I mean, I, I, we obviously want the best drainage system we can. If they're going to go beyond what they need to do to provide that, you know, maybe we should offer them something in, in return.
Right. I'd also ask for an opportunity to have my engineers go back and double check all of their calculations in terms of the cost to build the sidewalk. Kate, Kate implied that our numbers don't include labor. I, 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 I don't know that to be true or not, but I think if we are going to provide you numbers of costs, both for the sidewalks within and the other things we're proposing to do outside, we should all want those numbers to be exact. Uh, so we will take another look at those and obviously provide them, um, to Mr. Starrett or whoever else the board wants to verify that our numbers are accurate. And then I think the board can then make a better informed decision as to what we owe.
Okay. Thank you. And I, that would be helpful. And, you know, like I said, I'm not, I, I agree with Mike. I think that, you know, there should be, there's, I'm, I'm not against any consideration for, you know, a better drainage system and something that'll benefit the town. But again, it wasn't something that I recall that was kind of a trade off for the sidewalks in the first discussion. So, you know, certainly not opposed to, you know, giving the applicant some credit for that. Um, you know, it's certainly a, a, a betterment for the town. And I think we're all in favor of that.
Just for, so Attorney DeShane, you're saying that the, the infiltration system overflow, flow pipe, overflow pipe is about $28,000?
Matt, isn't, wasn't that the estimated cost?
I believe so. I'd have to double check, but I had her here. Just take me a second to pull it up.
Yeah. Well, in, in your letter, it says 36, 764. So I guess I'm wondering how much this improvement actually costs. Cause in the, in the document, it's 36, 764, but you're saying it's 28. So.
Yeah, that, that was my number Dylan. I just pulled that off the top of my head. That's why I said, I, I think we should all go back and take another look at the exact cost of all these improvements and verify that they're accurate from both sides of the equation. And all I remembered was that the pipe was some magnitude of 10,000. I, I, that 28,000 was my number. Whatever number Mr. Waterman provided to you in the written performance, I can assure you is more accurate than my memory.
Yeah. And look, just so that I'm, I'm clear, I don't disagree with Darren and Mike. I think giving some uh, credit to the applicant for, uh, doing the right thing with the stormwater is fine. I just want to make sure that if, you know, if, if we're clarifying numbers, let's clarify all the numbers. I, I also would ask if we don't do a shovel ready plan for more of nutting than what we were doing before, I, I, I have some question about the value of 200 feet of nutting road sidewalk to link the two uh, subdivision streets, you know, in a vacuum. Because the residents of that subdivision can already walk around the cul-de-sac and get to the other side of the cul-de-sac if they want. So I, it's kind of an odd piece of sidewalk in the middle of nutting road that essentially goes nowhere other than the subdivision. I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying that a- as I look at it, I don't, I don't put a lot of value in that. And I don't, I don't mean that as a put down. I just go, okay, it's a sidewalk that links the subdivision that's already linked.
Uh, no, no put down taken because that wasn't our suggestion. That was, I believe, a suggestion of the board. So.
Okay. Fair enough.
I think it came from the traffic engineer, um, as part of the pedestrian movement review. Um, but, and just following up on, I think Kate and or Doug's comments that, and I know engineering reviewed the form Gs. There wasn't a formal review, but just in talking with staff today, um, we have to include or revise all of the form Gs to include a E and R, um, construction cost index. So all the numbers are going to change. Um, and then we were going to reevaluate some of the construction costs that we put for the sidewalk extension plan. And we'll provide justification if those numbers change.
Okay. Great.
Hi, um, I appreciate the discussion about the overflow. Um, I don't think it's a nice to have. I think it's, it's a need to have because part of the stormwater requirements are that you don't flood out your neighbors. So, um, and based on highway experience, something like that is required. Uh, we can quibble about, uh, dollars and cents. And then if you want to quibble, then the, the question is what's the cost of, um, the overflow pipe above what they would have built, um, for, for stormwater requirements. Um, but I, I don't think it's, I don't want to go into a 50 cents here or a dollar there type of discussion. But I, I don't think it's, I don't want to go into a 50 cents here or a dollar there type of discussion. I would propose that we just make it simple. I really like Dylan's suggestion about extending the shovel-ready design down to Nutting Road. And why don't we just have that? And I mean, Depot Street, just have that and forget about any funds in to fund to a sidewalk and any contributions to a sidewalk. And just make it simple. Simple is wonderful.
Yeah, I, I don't know what, I guess, I don't know what it would cost to do a shovel-ready plan from, you know, subdivision two Depot. So maybe that's something you guys could look at and see if it seems equitable, maybe that. Maybe that would be a conclusion.
Yeah, because I was just looking at the town, the C I S site. And it looks as though from from this development to to the Nutting Ball Field, it is about the same distance as Depot Street to the Ball Field.
All right, so maybe that's, if you can kind of come up with a number for that, then maybe that would be a nice trade off, so. Okay.
And shovel-ready is the way to go per Paul and Dylan?
Not my call. I I'm just trying to keep Paul happy. He said he he needs a plan.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. As you realize, where we have a, you know, mitigation agreement with a one of the new asphalt plants in town. And and they, they're going to be looking to meet a requirement of, you know, one mile of sidewalks. So we're going to need locations to plug those in. This is a a good candidate only because we soon would connect with the one of the larger networks in town.
Okay, great. Great.
So again, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate the board's input. And we would ask for an opportunity to go back, shop in the pencil, verify all the numbers, do the analysis and come back to you with a proposal.
Sounds great. Thank you. All right, and then the the third item, I guess, for clarification here is the Housing Diversity Plan, for lack of a better word, you know, showing variety of housing and in types of housing that comes along with the OSRD. And, you know, that's something that I guess we're waiting to see from the applicant. Rebecca, if you want to add anything on that one?
Um, only that the board has to make a finding that the OSRD allows for greater variety in prices and types of housing and that we haven't heard anything addressing that yet from the applicant. So in order for you to make that required finding, something has to be brought, brought before you. So this is the applicant's opportunity.
Right, so if that's something that you guys can 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 put together and you can have a discussion on that one the next time as well.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I I will confess to, quite frankly, this Housing Diversity Plan, this first project I've ever worked in town where we were required to provide anything like this. And I was concerned about the language in the, in the draft decision only in that it assumed that the board would vote the decision and hopefully approve. But that then we would have to come in with a diversity plan showing what we were going to build and how much they were going to cost. And the board had the authority or it was required of us that the board would then have to approve that plan. And you can see where, the reason I made this a question for discussion tonight is, and and I think you've suggested we do it. I'd like to get that plan in and and get a sign off or acceptance from the board before we accept an approval that allows us to build a project without knowing what houses you're going to allow us to build.
I agree.
Could certainly not go to a bank with an approval where we really don't have an approval to build anything.
No, I completely agree.
Coming on us to get that plan to Rebecca, as we discussed today, as soon as possible, and we will do that. But I do want to say that the fact that it hasn't been submitted is not a conscientious decision on our part to withhold or not do anything. Again, quite frankly, we've never done this before. And I, from what I understand, this is derived from a recent project that's been reviewed and analyzed. And this requirement was placed on that project. And so I'm assuming this will now be the board's policy moving forward on all projects.
Right, exactly. And I think, I think you're right. We, we would not want to approve of the project, we wouldn't approve the project without, you know, this having reviewed this variety of home plans. So, you know, definitely, definitely something that I look forward to seeing and, you know, and discussing.
And Darren, may I just make a comment about this?
Sure.
Um, there is a condition in the draft OSRD decision. And it is pulled from the the most recent OSRD decision where this was, you all as a board considered this in great depth. Um, so the language in there may be a little more stringent than is necessary. But that was how that project went. So I just want to remind everybody that the the requirement in the bylaw is that the board make a finding that the applicant has demonstrated. And that could be in a plan or some in some, by some other means, that the OSRD allows for greater variety in prices or types of housing. So, you know, we're not necessarily looking for what we saw two months ago with the other OSRD project. We may be, or you may be, but just so, you know, people don't feel like there, there's only one, there's only one way that we can handle this.
Right.
The applicant has the ability to propose something that maybe is a little less formal than what was proposed previously.
Exactly.
Again, we'll work with staff to make sure we get what what they require.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. All right, anything, anything from the board on that one?
No.
Okay, great. All right, so those are the three real main items we wanted to touch base on on this, you know, in discussion we've had regarding the draft decisions. So I'll go to the board, anybody, anything else that stood out to anybody reading through the draft decisions? You know, I'll run it by through everybody on the board. I'll start with Mike this time.
Uh, nothing else. I think we covered everything that that I wanted to hear. I thank Attorney DeShane and Mr. Waterman for for coming tonight and answering the questions.
Great. Dylan?
I agree with Mike. Thank you, Attorney DeShane and and Matt.
All right, great. And Kate?
Uh, no, I did send some comments to Rebecca. And I'll look through my my comments and see if there's anything else that I wanted to bring forward to her correction. Like I noticed that was missing some standard stuff like blasting and and duration of the decision. But that's it.
All right, great. And I think, you know, the main, the main things have been touched on tonight. So I look forward to, you know, a further discussion with with the applicant, you know, Matt and Doug. And thank you guys again.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. And I do have to say that these draft decisions were some of the most comprehensive decisions I've ever seen. So Rebecca put a lot of time into them, and thank you for that.
Absolutely. All right, so the, the next meeting of the planning board is is not, is September 21st. Is that correct, Rebecca?
That's correct.
All right, so.
Darren, is there any public comment?
Oh, good question. Anything, anything from the audience?
I have something. I'm going to be out of state. I'll be working, I will be working 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So on the 20, on the 21st of September.
All right, and we've, we've already got a four-person board on this one already, so.
At this, I'm going to be out like the 10th to the 24th. I could either do a special meeting beforehand or afterwards.
Yeah, what's, what's, what's the meeting after that, October 5th?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, we could offline try to organize something before the 10th of September. Or if the applicant is amenable, we could look towards October 5th. There are a handful of, you know, a month isn't a lot of time to get all of these things completed and back into the decision. So I don't know how Doug feels about that, but.
My client's indicating that if it's in the best interest of the board and everyone, that October 5th is acceptable.
Okay. Great.
All right, so do we need, we need a motion to continue then?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that we continue. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, yes.
I am not, let me double do another check. But I was not seeing anything, and I am not seeing anything, so. Carrie, Dylan?
Okay, I move that we continue PB 1923, subdivision plan, open space residential development plan for 73 Nutting Road, also known as Wendell Place, to the October 5th meeting of the planning board, presumably done virtually at 7:30 PM.
I think Mike just seconded it. On mute, all right. All right, any further discussion? All right, so all those in favor of continuing to October 5th, say aye, Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
I say aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the the next item is PB 2021 for 65 Powers Road. The applicant is looking for site plan review to put an addition on their building. We actually heard this, or a version of this, earlier this year. But because Kate is recusing herself, which I guess you're going to do again, right, Kate?
Yep.
Isn't a butter, so Kate is going to, Kate recused herself. And in the interim, we had a change of membership on the board as well. So basically changed the quorum on the board. So now we have a new board. Kate's still going to recuse herself. So we have to basically close the other public hearing and open up a new one. So our first step here really is to vote to grant the withdrawal without prejudice of the prior iteration of 65 Powers Road. Is that right, staff?
Correct, yep.
All right, so basically to open up a new, new version of the of the public hearing. So is there a, any discussion around granting a withdrawal without prejudice for 65 Powers Road? So moved. All right.
Second.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of granting the withdrawal, say aye, Mike?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Say aye. All right, so now we're going to, before we open the public hearing for 65 Powers Road, the applicant has requested a fee waiver. An application fee waiver because it's substantially the same plan that they they submitted before. But because there was a quorum change on the board, which is out of their control, you know, they're asking for a fee waiver for the application fee. So I think that makes sense. I'll go to the rest of the board to see what your thoughts are.
I'm fine with that personally, just procedurally. Do we need to open the new public hearing and waive the reading first?
No, I think you can do the the fee waiver first and then open and then read and then.
Okay, I have no problem waiving it, given the fact it's essentially the same plan.
Right, I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so is there a motion to grant a fee waiver? So moved.
Second.
All right, two motions, two seconds. All right, motion, a second, third. All those in favor, say aye, Mike?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye to grant the fee waiver. So now we can.
Yeah, I'll move that we waive the reading of the public hearing notice.
Second. All right, all those in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye.
And I'll move that we open the public hearing for PB 2021, site plan review for 65 Powers Road.
And a water resources protection overlay district special firm.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor, say aye, Mike?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, so the public hearing is now open for PB 2021. Again, this is, you know, in addition to an existing building. Bob, I'm not sure how much you've read up on the on the, on this in the past. You know, I'll go to the applicant here since they're basically, you know, starting scratch from scratch here. But they do have the benefit of some comments that we made and engineering made on the prior go around. So I guess I'll start, I'll go to the staff first and then we can go right to the applicant.
Um, well, as you said, this is a, you know, you all have, with the exception of Bobby, you all have heard this, about this project already. It has gone to engineering and they have, they have, I think they've, engineering has provided two letters so far. So I'll let Paul speak to it if he wants to now or after we hear from the applicant. But I think engineering is pretty close to satisfied with this project, so.
All right, why don't we go to the applicant and then, and we'll, we'll listen to engineering.
For the record, Chris Anderson with Hanning Engineering, here on behalf of Bergeron Machine. This tried to listen for the board a couple meetings ago, but for the purposes of, I guess, procedural, I'll go do a quick overview of the project. The project is located at 65 Powers Road. The property is currently developed with an existing industrial building of a little less than 11,000 square feet. It's a combination of office, manufacturing and a little bit of warehousing space. The site has two driveway accesses off of Powers Road, which connects both in the front of the building and behind the building, which that extends around the site and provides a traffic flow for deliveries and parking for the employees for the building. There is a wetland resource area in the rear portion of the property. We are currently going through the conservation filing procedures. We have a meeting, I believe, next Wednesday. During that previous meeting, we've had a couple conversations and we've provided the same plan. That's the whole of the court tonight for their approval as well. It's the intent of the applicant to construct a 2,000 square foot building addition on the backside of the existing building. Some of the work that'll be entailed will be the relocation and adjustment of the existing driveway slash parking area. We're going to maintain the original intent of the site design by creating the extension in 24-foot wide drive aisle loop around the rear portion of the site. Yep, great, thank you. Around the rear portion of the site and then provide the requested parking reduction along that drive aisle as well. Because we are within the water source protection district, there is some strict requirements relative to the impervious cover on the site. Because we are providing, proposing to construct additional impervious area, we're trying to offset that by removing impervious area from around the building, primarily along the front portion of the site. primarily along the front portion of the site. Per the applicant, that area is never physically utilized at any point in time, and it's essentially dead space on the property. So to counteract the impervious that were painted on the backside of the site, that area will be removed, and the area along the sea is permanent stabilization. Currently, the site is about twenty-two point six percent impervious. At the end of the day, you're looking at about twenty-one percent impervious. So a reduction of about twenty-seven hundred square feet. So that does aid in both satisfying the requirements of the watershed special permit requirements, as well as helping achieve stormwater management compliance as the site is a redevelopment. And the reduction in pervious just aids in the reduction of runoff and reduction of volume runoff. As we stated earlier, we are currently looking for also a special permit for the reduction in parking. Per zoning, we're required to have forty-four spaces, we're showing currently thirty-three. Because there's only twenty-five employees on the site, currently on the, employed by the employer, we feel that as an exit to have the whole forty-four, the twenty, the thirty-three spaces allows for the each employee to have a single car and for potential visitors to the site. A couple notes from the previous hearings and from the commission and engineering. Concern was raised relative to the lack of stormwater management on the site. Currently, the water sheet flows to the backside of the property with no mitigation features. To help offset the change in pervious and everything like that, proposing to construct a two-foot wide, three-foot deep infiltration trench along, along the back portion of the proposed pavement. That will allow for some capture of runoff during smaller storm events to accentuate the natural recharge on the property. And if we prevent any further encroachment into the resource area or that woodland along the back portion of the site, we're proposing to construct or install one-yard boulders along that side, so that helps prevent any snow piles or anything like that from inherently pushing snow further into the wood line. That's pretty much the challenge of the project, if there's any questions from the board or the public, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Paul, would you like to opine on behalf of engineering?
Yeah, just to thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett Town Engineer. I've heard the phrase substantially similar or the same. I just want to make sure the designer knows that if there have been any revisions to the plans that we've already reviewed, then we need to, to know that and what those are, because we've otherwise agreed that our comments previously issued will stand. But if, if something else has slipped into the plan, we need to know that. Otherwise, we're back at square one, and we'll need to evaluate this plan all from the beginning. At which point, we, you know, be more concerned about the fee waiver. But if, if, if we, if this plan is indeed the same we've looked at before, it's not going to be an issue for us.
Through the chair, I'll, I'll address that. It's essentially the same exact plan that, that was originally submitted to the engineering department, I believe, on July tenth. The only difference between then and now is the change in court, and the, you know, board, that was the only change.
The change in the what?
The change in the board members and the.
Okay. All right, so engineering's comments that were received after that first of July, the July's the middle, they should still stand?
That's, that's our position now, Mr. Chair, and, but we'll follow through with the hearing.
Okay. I will go to, it sounds to me as though, you know, reading through the, the comments, it looks like, you know, engine, they, the applicant is satisfied engineering's questions. I was happy to see the infiltration trench put in there, and the, the boulders for the snow, snow storage. I'll go to the board, Mike. Any questions or comments?
No, again, we went through this before, so I'm happy with, I'm happy with the way it is now.
Okay. Dylan.
Um, so I just want to refresh my memory from the applicant, so traffic can come in from either, from either one of the entrances, right? You don't say come in this way and out that way, traffic can come in from both sides?
Correct.
All right, so I have a question on the dumpster in the back, so presumably, right, for trash pickup, your, your trash collection service is gonna enter to the south, on the southwestern entrance probably, right? Because in looking at it, truck's gonna have to come in that way, go past the dumpster, and then back into the dumpster to pick it up, is that, is that your understanding?
Is there intent to utilize, if you're looking at the building from the roadway, the right-hand side, you'll pull in, you'll pull directly into it, this will be an overhead dumpster kind of configuration. You'll pull in, back up, and then pull back out.
Okay, okay, all right, so they're gonna, okay, it's, all right, great, so then, I mean, ultimately where I was going with that is you, the, the revised parking plan. The, if, if we for some reason found that we needed, that you needed to actually provide forty-five spaces. In that design plan, you reconfigure, like, you know, the, the parking area obviously gets widened out there on the southwestern side to accommodate essentially two aisles of parking. And, I mean, I can't really tell, it looks like the dumpster is still there, although it kind of looks like you've had to increase the pavement with there to accommodate traffic flow, so can you, first of all, can you explain what happens to the dumpster if you have to implement the revised parking plan?
If the dumpster has to be relocated, at the end of the day, it'll probably be shifted a little bit further away off of that pavement edge, and/or potentially flipped to the other side, so we go in the reverse direction for the dumpster traffic flow, if you will, so you'll pull in on the left-hand side, pull through. There's currently a container there that's gonna be removed at the end of the day, but the dumpster truck driver will drive into that area, back up, and pull back out.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think, I mean, it would be helpful if on this plan, you clearly delineate where that dumpster would be located if you had to implement this parking plan, because it's, I, I understand, and I can appreciate that you don't expect to have to implement that, but if it ever was to be necessary, we need to see where that's gonna be to understand traffic flow through the site and snow removal and everything else that goes along with that, so, so if you could maybe solidify that a little bit on a, on a revised plan set, that'd be appreciated.
I think, I, I think also that's helpful in case there's a turnover at the building, say that the owner sells and there's another use in there, and they have to expand that parking. Then it would be helpful to have that, that plan in there.
Okay. That was my only comment, Darren.
All right, cool, and then Bob?
So I wanted to understand about the proposed addition and its use, and whether or not it was going to add additional employees.
The proposed addition will be purely warehousing space, and the intent not to increase the employee count on the property. Currently, there is a, the inside of the building is a little bit confined and everything like that, so the intent of this addition is to be able to relocate some of the existing warehousing space inside the current building to free up mobility within the building itself, that's the intent behind that addition.
Okay, and it looked like the way you've reconfigured the site, you, there was kind of a, an implied front entrance with the front drive. It now looks like you have a, a rear entrance to the facility closest to where the handicap parking is, is that a correct assumption?
The front portion of the site has never been utilized as the primary entrance to the building, the rear side of it has always been that. So that's why the applicant is requesting that we remove that front area, because nobody ever uses it. There's no direct access to the building from that area. All the main entrance to, to the office area is on the backside of the building.
Okay, and then visitor parking is clearly marked back there somewhere?
There's no real specification to hint, or visitor spacing. Typically, in most buildings, the front, a couple spaces are dedicated to visitors, but we're not dictating which spaces are which for the purposes of this plan, just to allow for flexibility and the usage of the property.
Okay, yeah, I guess the one thing I'd add is that this plan does provide for removal of the spaces that are within the the hundred-foot wetlands buffer, so that's, that's a good, good thing to move the vehicles out. My only concern was on making sure that we're comfortable with removing the number of spaces, and that provides for adequate parking for the employees. But it's my understanding that if this were to change to a different tenant, we would come back for site plan review and have to deal with that at that time, so I guess I'm comfortable with Bergeron at this time, given their, their current employee count with the number of spaces. That's all.
Okay.
Darren, this is Jeff, I just wanted to clarify one thing. Bob just mentioned that a change in tenant would trigger site plan review. That's a possibility, but if the use goes from a like-use to a like-use, that wouldn't necessarily trigger site plan review as a change of use, but it's certainly possible that it would, but it's not a guarantee.
I should have been more clear in my comments. I was, I'm more concerned about that, that changing a type of use and increasing the, the number of employees substantially, in which case there's a parking issue.
Fair concern.
Thanks, anything else from the board? Anything else, anything Rebecca from the audience?
Let me check. No.
All right, so, so Dylan, you requested a kind of revision with the, with the dumpster?
I just, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I'll, I'll offer it up to the board, I know we don't intend on, on them implementing that plan, I just think it would be helpful to have that documented.
I think it would be helpful. So that's the only kind of comment we have back tonight, is I guess the question is, you know, is the, is the board comfortable voting on a decision to approve, or do we want to have a draft decision and then review it again and, and vote at the next meeting?
I'd be comfortable voting on it now, with subject to them putting it on the plan to, to the satisfaction of staff.
Okay.
Avoiding them having to come back, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
Yeah, I'm the same vote, okay. All right, so that being said, is. Are you happy with that, Dylan?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Yeah, is that? Okay, and the staff, are you happy, is that, is that amenable to staff if we can vote on the, on the item, and then, but have it subject to staff review of the placement of the dumpster?
Yes, that's fine. Yep, that's fine.
Great. All right, so is there a motion then to approve the site plan review?
Yeah, I guess I'll move that we approve the site plan review for PB twenty twenty-one sixty-five Powers Road contingent upon staff reviewing a modified parking plan diagram and the placement of a dumpster if we, if there ever was a need to expand the parking back to forty-five spaces.
And can I just throw in there that you, and I forgot this when you opened, but you have two special permits too, one for reduced parking and the other for, for the water resource protection overlay district.
Do you want those, do you want, can we do it as one, or I thought I was gonna do those as separate?
Oh, you're doing separate, okay, go ahead, sorry.
I didn't know what you needed, so.
No, that's fine, keep going, sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine. Okay, so that was the one for the site plan review.
All right, great, so is the second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the site plan review, say aye, Mike.
Aye.
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 Say aye.
All right, I will move that we approve a special permit to reduce the required parking spaces for PB twenty twenty-one sixty-five Powers Road to thirty-three, whereas forty-four is required.
May I interrupt again, I'm so sorry.
That's fine.
Was the hearing closed?
Oh, no.
Have you closed the hearing yet?
We have not.
Okay.
Actually Rebecca, one, you guys, one second, I'm gonna, we'll get a power cord here, hold a second.
Okay.
So we're supposed to have the theme song from Jeopardy playing in the background?
Seconds till his camera cuts out.
Oh, I'll make sure I have that for the next meeting.
Let's, let's queue up Jeff.
All right, sorry about that. Computer was yelling at me.
I'll move that we close the public hearing on PB twenty twenty-one sixty-five Powers Road.
For a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye, Mike.
Aye.
Dylan.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
I say aye.
Okay, now I'll move that we approve a special permit for a reduction in required parking spaces to thirty-three, whereas forty-four is required for PB twenty twenty-one sixty-five Powers Road.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye, Mike.
Aye.
Dylan.
Aye.
Bob. Aye.
I say aye.
And I will move that we approve a special permit to render impervious more than fifteen percent of the lot in a zone to water resource protection overlay district for PB twenty twenty-one sixty-five Powers Road.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye, Mike.
Aye.
Dylan.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
All right, I say aye. Great, all right, thanks everyone.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Brings us to our third public hearing item, which is for fifty-one fifty-three Main Street. Site plan review for the construction of a freestanding public service, public safety service facility, the tower in the center. Now, this is continued from our July sixth meeting. And some updates, Kate, I'll go, I'll go to the, I'll go to staff.
Darren, this is Jeff. As requested by the board at the last meeting, we did provide a draft decision for your consideration. The applicant did provide some updated information, and we did adjust the draft decision accordingly. I think I find that the changes are very minor in nature, and relate to some either landscaping, fencing, or, or bollard installation, but I'll let the applicant speak to that, Chris Lo.
Great. Thank you for hearing our application again. Since the last presentation, we had discussions with the police department, and the citizens made that they would like to have a security fence around the tower, but they'd like the fencing to match the existing fencing on the opposite side of the, of the site where the tower would be located. And that's a wooden panel fence, so our proposal would be to proceed with the fence the same height and the same character as that existing fence with a gate in it to be able to access the tower. And then around the fencing, we have added some bollards against the parking area and also against the sidewalk area to prevent the tower. uh against the parking area and also against the sidewalk area to prevent the tower.
Alright, I'll go to uh I'll go to the board for comments. Uh Mike?
Um I really don't have any other comments. My comment, my questions were gonna be about the fence and the bollards that we had talked about before, but it appears that they've worked that out when I read the draft decision, so um uh I don't, I don't have anything at this point.
Alright, good. Dylan?
Same, I think the fence is a good idea, otherwise I have no comments.
Great, Bob?
Nope, same here. Um the bollards, the uh fence and the uh illustration of the fall zone are what I was looking for last meeting and it's all shown, so I like it.
That's great. Kate?
No comment. I appreciate the work that they did.
Thank you. Me too. I think uh I echo those all the comments and I think I like the fence and I like the uh the fact it's gonna match the other fence on their property as well, so um yeah, I I think it's a good plan, so. Anything from the audience? Uh Rebecca?
Um I'm not seeing anything. Let me take a quick look. Um no.
Okay. Alright, so everybody said the chance to review the draft decision. Uh I think it's all, you know, pretty comprehensive and pretty straightforward, so uh is there a motion then to uh approve the site plan review?
Well, two, two questions, Darren. One, do we, do we have to take any last public comment?
Uh well, there wasn't any last. Is there anything out there now, Rebecca?
Uh no.
And then we have, we have to close, right?
Have to close the hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll move that we close the public hearing for uh, what is this, PB twenty twenty three fifty one and fifty three Main Street?
Back again.
Alright, motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye, Mike?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Say aye.
Okay, uh so I will move that we approve uh the site plan review for PB twenty twenty three um for a public safety service facility uh at fifty one and fifty three Main Street, the Westford Police Department.
Great. Alright, motion in a second uh to approve the site plan review. All those in favor, say aye, Mike?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Hey?
Aye.
I say aye. Alright, thanks guys. Thanks folks.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Alright, that brings us to our fourth public hearing item of the evening, PB twenty twenty four uh zero nineteen thirty three and thirty five Hartford Road. Uh again, a similar uh proposal that we heard in the past, and as in the last time, I'm gonna recuse myself as in a butter. So I will uh, I'll be a spectator on this one.
Alright. Okay, so I think we need to start, uh is there a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
So
Do you wanna do the fee first?
Uh we can talk, yeah, sure, we can tackle the fee first. So uh the applicant has requested a waiving of the fee. Is there a motion to waive the fee, or do we want to have a discussion?
I would like a discussion first.
Alright. Uh maybe the applicant can provide the rationale for requesting the the fee waiver?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what we, what we've asked for is essentially a a credit for the fees paid for the preliminary analysis uh to be applied towards the fees for the conventional subdivision, which I believe has been a standard process for applicants that have gone through the preliminary process uh in the past, rather than going directly to definitive. Um the preliminary process is very helpful and very valuable to not only the applicants, but to the board in flushing out problems, uh but it does come at a significant expense. Uh and so as in keeping with past practices, we are asking the board to apply um the fees paid under the preliminary to the fees owed for the um definitive, correct, Mr. Slager?
Uh no, not entirely. Uh what we, what we did in the preliminary plan is we also filed a special permit application for an OSRD. Um and that was done because we wanted to have a discussion on the base number of lots. So at that time, we provided a conventional yield plan and an OSRD plan, and we actually applied for the special permit and applied for the admitted the fee for the special permit. And then when um it was discovered that, or when we talked about it even more, uh we realized that there was an upcoming election and that we would have an issue with a quorum. Um so it was decided that we should probably withdraw the re- uh special permit application and the board at the time acknowledged that we would uh requesting a credit for um not having to apply that um applicant fee again on the special permit, since it's essentially the same permit. So it's similar to the previous application where uh there will be a change in board membership and a change in quorum uh that beyond our control. Otherwise, we would have left the special permit application uh open.
Apologize for my error.
Uh so does the board have any uh discussion, or do we want to talk about the the fee reduction or the fee waiving?
Mike?
I'm sorry. Okay.
Straight hands, right?
Sorry.
It's appropriate um to waive the fee for the for the OSRD special permit, because they have already paid it and we never actually acted for open, we did open and close, but we never had any discussions related to it. But uh the any fee for uh the site plan and stormwater would still apply.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
Uh are they looking for a reduction in the other fees, or just the special permit fee?
Just the permit fee.
And I would absolutely agree with that.
Okay, Bob?
I'm fine with it.
Alright, is there a motion?
Move that we waive the fee for the uh special permit for the open space residential development for um Hartford Road.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Uh all those in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And I say aye. Alright, uh is there a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh all those in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I say aye. And is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And I say aye. Turn it over to the applicant, or actually staff, is there any updated comment from you before we go to the applicant?
They're working.
Dylan, I don't think so. This is the initial opening of the hearing, so we typically turn to the applicant to provide an overview of the proposal.
Great, thank you. Alright. Attorney DeShane?
Darren, uh the board, good evening. Douglas DeShane, representing KMR Real Estate LLC, and now that I'm on the same page with everyone else, I apologize. Um we are here to discuss uh a definitive subdivision and and was stated an open space special permit uh for a project known as um Colonel Rolls Drive, uh located off of zero nineteen thirty three and thirty five Hartford Road. Uh you recall that we did appear before the board previously with a nine lot conventional subdivision and a nine lot open space divi- uh subdivision, uh which the board uh graciously analyzed for us. We walked through the the projects, the issues and the questions and concerns, and it was my recollection that the board ultimately directed us to um move towards an open space subdivision. Um however, it was also recommended among other uh recommendations that we reduce uh the number of lots to eight. Uh so what we're here to present this evening is the eight lot open space uh definitive subdivision and of course, the open space uh special permit. Uh again, the site is located off of Hartford Road. Um it's a twelve point nine eight one acre site in total. Uh so essentially thirteen acres in in total, of which only uh one point nine acres is wetland, so just under two acres and uh leaving us uh in excess of eleven acres of dry land. Um some of which, uh a good portion of which we are now proposing to become uh open space. Um and this, the, oh, some of our open space actually abuts uh land currently controlled by the Town of Westford Conservation Commission. So it makes for a nice connection of open space and and improvement in the overall open space holdings of the town. Um i- if the board is accepting, accepting, I I'd like Mr. Slager to give you a a little more of an overview and a little more technical discussion of of what is being proposed under this eight lot open space subdivision.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, uh members. Uh Mark Slager from Allen Engineering. Um during the discussions of the um preliminary plan, we evaluated some options for providing a little bit more separation between the houses and the development uh adjacent developments. Um so what we've done is combine, come up with a forty foot wide layout, which is a request of a waiver of from fifty feet is the required layout width. Uh we're proposing twenty two feet of pavement uh with a cul-de-sac at the end. Total length of the roadway is about a thousand and fifty feet. Um we do have eight lots, as you can see. Um all accessed uh via the new roadway. Uh we've positioned the roadway entrance essentially opposite heritage way, although it doesn't al- align up uh directly opposite, so one of the requests, uh waiver requests would be to um allow that slight offset. Um there is a benefit to it, which is discussed in the waivers as well. Um we are proposing one sidewalk on uh the southerly side of the roadway. Uh and we're also proposing to waive uh requesting a waiver of granite curb and proposing Cape Cod burn. Um we do have one wetland crossing at the very entrance uh to the site. Um there is an existing gravel driveway there, however, it's only about twelve feet to fourteen feet wide, so we obviously need to widen that out. Um we do have uh proposed retaining walls on each side uh which is the amount of wetland alteration that we're proposing. Um which is well within the five thousand square foot limit uh that Mass DEP composes. Um although we are a limited project as well. Um so we do have some replication areas that are gonna be located within the open space parcels. Uh they're in the hatched areas. Um unfortunately, I don't have a pointer, so uh open space parcel B, uh there's some blue shaded areas that show where the replication areas are gonna be. Um we're proposing, uh there are five common land parcels, uh four of which are gonna be designated as open space. Uh the total open space proposed is a little over six acres, four and a half of which is dry. Uh the open space would com- uh comprise of approximately forty seven percent of the entire site. Um there is an additional common land parcel, you can see um just before we get to lot one, coming up the road on the left, common land parcel E. That's essentially for drainage. Um we felt it'd be better to put it on a common land parcel as opposed to making it part of one of the building lots. Um that particular common land parcel um is approximately one acre. So we're providing a total of uh six point well under six point eight acres of common land, which includes the common land parcel and open space. Um and of that, that's a little over half the site. That's fifty two percent of the site. Um so I think we're providing a decent amount of open space and common land for the development. Um all of which is gonna be contiguous to the existing um town of uh Westford Conservation Land as well. So it'll be uh opportunities for um trail connections and whatnot. Um also during one of the um one of the comments from Mr. Harmon of the Westford Conservation Trust, I believe, uh he was concerned with some of the stone walls that exist out there. And with the preservation of the open space, we're actually not really disturbing much stone wall at all. You can see um the lot line the lot line um at lot one, between lot one and two. Um
You want me to?
Go back up, yeah, that's, that's good. No, go to the other plan.
Good.
Yeah.
Hey, hey.
Okay. Well, yeah, zoom in. You can see there's a stone wall there. I've actually made that the lot line between lot one and lot two, and also the common land parcel E and lot one. And it's also gonna be part of the lot line between parcel B and commonly in parcel E. Um so that's gonna help define the lot lines, and it's also gonna help preserve the stone walls, which was uh an issue that Mr. Harmon had. The abutment to the south was concerning the amount of separation between his home and uh the development and the lack of screening. Um most of you are on the sidewalk. I know uh Bob, you weren't there at the time, but we did have a sidewalk and we walked in that particular area of the site to see you know, what could be done in that area. And that's why we came up with a discussion of uh reducing the uh roadway width from fifty feet down to forty feet, specifically moving the sideline, sideline of the roadway on that particular side of the road, which would help move up the houses further away. The other thing I've done is uh reduced the required cul-de-sac uh size um from seventy feet down to sixty feet. It's still uh sufficient for emergency vehicle apparatus turning uh turning radiuses. Um I can provide the uh template overlays to the engineering, engineering department in conjunction with their review, because I'm sure that it's one of the questions they're gonna have. In total, what we were able to do with uh respect to moving the houses is on the prior uh preliminary OSRD plan on lot six, for example, um that house moved from seventy three feet away from the lot line to now ninety nine feet away from the lot line. Um and these are ballpark numbers, because the actual uh house locations haven't been finalized because of the separate designs, but they are very, very close. Um so we were able to move the lot, the house on lot six about twenty six feet further away. And then on lot seven, we moved it fifteen feet further away from the adjacent lot line. Uh in comparison, uh the house on um directly to the south of that, on the abutting property, it's Mr. Williams's house. His house is fifty eight feet from the lot line, so both of the houses on lot six and seven are gonna be further away from the lot line than the existing abutting house. Um and then just for comparison, um houses are gonna be separated from Mr. Williams's house by uh on lot six, about a hundred and sixty three feet, and then the lot seven, uh about a hundred and forty feet. So there's gonna be significant separation between the houses. There's plenty of uh distance between the houses and the lot lines. And we provided a pretty decent backyard for lots in six and seven and still maintain the tree buffer uh in that area. So that's essentially the design. Uh again, let me just mention, we are gonna be providing town water. Town water is in available at Hartford Road. Uh so we will be providing town water up Colonel Rolls Drive to the end. Uh so all of the homes will have town water as well. Uh and with that, I'll turn it back over to the board or over to Doug.
Attorney DeShane, any additional comments from you?
Uh no, no, sir. We're, we're here to answer any questions the board might have.
Great, thank you. Um I guess Jeff, any, any comments now that the applicant has presented from staff before I go to the board?
Oh, just that we're going through the subdivision rules and regs, and we're just gonna provide more detailed comments uh for the next meeting and check their list of requested waivers, make sure it's complete.
Yeah, okay. And there's, there's a couple of things that we need to do here, right? We need to come up with a list of, if there's any additional information that this board needs before sort of rendering a decision on a preference for conventional development versus open space, right?
That's right. As you may recall, the preliminary decision is not binding. So we would ask as early in the process as possible, if you can figure out what you need to either confirm or make your decision as far as which avenue. And then if you have any, I would call it big picture questions or issues who want the applicant to be given an opportunity to address that as soon as possible. Anything that could affect either designer layout such that they're not delving into minute details to only be changed later, so.
Great. Okay. So with that in mind, I guess I'll go to the board. And I'll go to Mike. Mike, do you have feedback?
Yeah, just a question to the town engineer, Mr. Starrett. Going from 50 to 40, is that a big concern on your end? I know the reason why they did it, and I appreciate them taking into consideration the abutters concerned about where those houses are and encroaching on their backyard. And I think it's a great idea to move them forward, but is that going to be a concern for engineering going from 50 to 40 for that roadway?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the, our comments will be based on the way that your regulations are written. And, and of course, you have other subdivisions that have recently been constructed or been through the process where this issue came front and center. So we'll try to articulate that in our comments. But we, we, you know, we'll, we'll need to pay attention to that.
If I may just add one comment. We are proposing to maintain the roadway as a private way. So it will, it's not intended on anyone's part at this point to present it to the town for acceptance as a public way.
And that will significantly influence our comments.
I, I appreciate that. Again, I appreciate the, you know, taking the time to take into those comments of the abutters and do what you can to create more space from that. At this point, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Bob?
So my first question was going to be about the, the road, whether it was private or intended to be public, because that was going to influence my questions about Cape Cod versus Granite burn. So I'm willing to forego that question with the understanding it's going to be private. I'm just trying to understand on this plan, since I'm new to this, I'm looking at this access and utility easement. That has nothing to really do with this plan, correct? That happens to be in a budding parcel is, and that's the parcel that's immediately to the west of lot one.
Correct. That is going to be actually an access and utility easement in that it's going to, there's some grading that's going to be re- on that site.
And the other question I had was relative to the 40 foot right of way, is that the intent that that be balanced on either side of the road? Or does the road come closer to the edge of that right of way in certain places?
The center line of the pavement is the same as the center line of the 40 foot right of way.
Okay. And my last question has to do with the balance of the site with respect to excavation. Do you have any numbers yet in terms of what you expect that excavation to look like in terms of grading and whether or not there's any removal of earth materials planned for that site?
I did not do a cut and fill analysis on the site, but there are detailed grading plans provided in the plan set along with the road profile.
Okay. And my last and final question is, I'd like to just ask if I could at some point, Mark, walk the site with you and whoever else from the town would like to join me.
Sure.
So that's it. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Kate?
Hi. I think these waiver requests are, I think they're good ideas. When we do start talking about the details of it, some topics that I would like to hear more about are disposition is that wonderful, the wonderful rocks that are at the back of lot four and five, I guess it is. Are they going to be on the property or the, or be by what you've done for moving things? Will they now be part of the open space parcel? And I'd also like to, we should have a discussion about buffers between the development and the, and the neighbors on Star Circle as well as Moon and Way. I hope I said them right. Because when we were on the sidewalk, there was the mark and, or the applicant being demented to having a buffer there rather than just having no disturbed zones, no disturbed zone. And so I look forward to those discussions. And now I'd like to go back to the beginning and talk about the open space base plan versus the conventional plan. Because before we really talk about the open space plan, we need to make a finding on what we think the conventional yield is. So was there a plan up before showing the conventional? The proposed conventional? Or discussion?
Yes, there was. Matt, if you want to just go up to page one of that plan set?
And to you, Bob, this was a discussion that we had in the preliminary that originally they had come with nine. And there was a lot of discussion about the second wetland crossing and because the Conservation Commission, whether or not they would actually allow that second crossing. And so that we had a discussion whether or not that should be part of our deliberation on, on what the conventional yield should be along with, there was a discussion about the desires of the homeowners who currently own that parcel and their desire to keep it open space and such. And if we didn't, purchasing that parcel didn't become part of this development, what would happen to that, to that land at the, at the back of that abutters property? And so we were all amenable to a compromise where we would both take a hit and come up with a conventional yield of eight lots instead of nine. And I think just showing this, that there's definitely a benefit to the open space over the conventional. There's a great reduction in, in the pavement and a great increase in, in the open space and, and availability to, to the public for the potential trail system. So we should, I think, take a vote tonight on this, that we agree that eight is the, whether or not we agree that eight is, should be the conventional yield and that, that we, if we, we recommend the open space over the conventional plan with, with a discussion.
Thanks, Kate. I guess my comments are, I mean, if I'm, if I'm just being brutally honest, I was, I was a little disheartened when I, when I read the packet this weekend at how little, you know, I, I knew you guys were going, you know, based on our sidewalk, I knew that we were going to go down to 40 feet. And we talked about, you know, pulling lots five through eight as much away from the neighbors as we could. Those on, on Moon and Way and Star Circle. And, and I do appreciate, you know, Attorney DeShane and, and Mr. Slager, what, what you've done. I'm not, I'm not putting down the work at all. But it, it doesn't, it looks like those houses are awfully close to the abutters. And, and Kate, to your comments around open space and versus conventional yield, while there's no doubt that there's a lot less, you know, impervious surface and, and a reduction to the overall impact to the site. When I look at both options, I'm struck with the fact that, you know, for the residents of Star Circle and Noonan Way, the conventional plan is probably less obtrusive to them because they only really have three house lots that are significantly larger that abut them. And therefore you're going to be able to tuck those homes in there with a lot less impact to the neighbors. So, you know, when we look at these open space plans, I'm always sort of trying to look at the open space that's left available and really ask myself, is, is the space that's being left truly usable, right? And, and we can't really consider the town of Westford Conservation Land because that is what it is, and that's already open to the public. The question is, with the rest of the pieces, the only one in this plan I think is truly usable is parcel D, arguably. Right? I mean, parcel B is essentially like wet, and that's where there's going to be infiltration systems and detention basins and everything else. And then that's an access and utility easement. That's not really part of the plan either, right? So, and I guess parcel A, I mean, there's pretty much nothing there, right? It's, it's the edge of the road. So.
What about parcel C?
Where is it?
It's north of lot one.
That's the one on the other side of the wetlands.
I don't even know. How, how does one get there? I mean, who, who can use that? Patton Road? I guess. I guess maybe for Patton Road. That's where you would put the, the homes in the conventional yield. That's the, you know, if you get across the wetlands, like, I'm not sure the folks in this subdivision can easily navigate their way to parcel C. I'm assuming there might be some way into that from Patton Lane or something like that.
Well, they can get there from the Town of Westford Conservation Land. So it's behind lots one, two, three, four, parcel D. And that's also why we have that access and utility easement between parcel B and C, next to lot one. So they could that for access.
But Mr. Slager, where's the wetland crossing? I mean, there was a full stream running through, you know, the lowlands there on the north side of lot one when we walked the, the property. So, you know, without some sort of footbridge or something to, to cross it, that's not an, an easily navigable track unless you've got a pretty good pair of wading boots.
Well, I mean, there's certain times of year when there's going to be quite a bit of water there, and there's certain times of year that it's going to be dry. But you don't necessarily have to cross the stream at that particular location because it's going to come, become essentially part of the town land. And they could head up the hill a little bit, cross there where there's very little flow in the stream year round. And then go back down to parcel D. I mean, it, it doesn't always have to be a straight shot, but it's, I think it's a huge benefit to the town to have all of that open space all connected and usable.
The other question, Mark, are all of the stone walls actually marked on this plan? I, I know the stone wall that you, where you have lot one, the separation of lot one and lot two. I, I remember us walking and in fact, we crossed that, that stone wall. I thought that there were smaller pieces of stone wall behind what would be on this plan or on the, on the open space plan, either lot eight or lot seven. I, I, I remember there was remnants of a stone wall kind of cutting through these folks' backyards, and I don't see that marked on the plan.
There is a portion of the stone wall that continues from the corner near lot six.
Yeah.
That's the redirection.
I see that one. I see the one that kind of separates, I guess, lot six and five.
That's an old lot line. You know, and I, I don't know when the parcels were created, but yeah, there's an old lot line with an old stone wall there.
Yeah. I thought there was one running, I thought it was, there was one running kind of east-west-ish behind, you know, at the back of lots eight and seven that we sort of walked across because we walked, we walked down that way specifically to see the proximity to the neighbors, I remember, on Star Circle. And there was, there was definitely one there. All right. So with that, Kate, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we want to take a vote on preference for open space versus conventional now? Or would we like to hear from the, from the audience first?
I, I would recommend since Bob has not walked the parcel, that we give him an opportunity to walk it so he can make an informed vote. And then that we get the conventional yield plan showing house locations in our packet the next time so that we can make a, an informed vote. And then given the late hour that we, we, we provide comments on, on the, I think we already have provided comments on the, some of the things that we would like, once we take the vote on the conventional yield, that we, we provided comments on the types of things that we would like to hear about with the open space, assuming that we, we vote that that's the better way to go. And I think the trail system is an important thing that it, that it does get laid out on the final plan. Including a, probably a little footbridge. You could have a boy scout build a footbridge. They're always looking for projects. Things like that. That, that's what I would recommend.
Okay.
And the other part? Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, I, I'm, I'm I'm a little taken aback by the fact that here we are, having filed the definitive open space plan based on a recommendation in a preliminary decision of this board that made it clear that the board, you know, preferred an open space. We spent multiple meetings discussing the yield plan, and I think it was, you summed it up well, that, you know, it was our position that the two proposed crossings, in order to get the nine lots, satisfied state and local law. Whether or not the commission would make, you know, a decision to approve or not, you know, I, I, I don't think any of us can, can know what that would be. But improving yield, you know, it's our job to show that our proposed plan meets rules and regulations, and we did that. And we had an extensive discussion on that. And I do agree that there was some, some discussion that, well, you know, we had a good point that we got nine, but there was also a counter argument that it could only be, may only be seven if in fact, the wetland, second wetland crossing wasn't approved. And, and I do think it was a very reasonable compromise to do eight lots. Based on that discussion, based on your decision, based on the preliminary review, my client has spent tens of thousands of dollars putting all this together. And now I feel what, that we may not get eight lots or you may not want open space? I mean, I, I guess I'm at a loss of why we spent all that time and energy on the preliminary process. I, I thought that stuff was decided.
I think Kate's, Kate's point was, we just want to get the board member who's new to the, to the board to do a sidewalk before we cast the vote. That was what I heard.
Yeah. And Doug, I appreciate that we did do a preliminary non-minding decision, but I'm just saying we have to officially take the vote now. And I would like Bob to get the opportunity to be brought up to speed.
But you've also asked us to provide new, a plan showing our yield and to justify our proposed yield plan again. Is that?
Oh, you have, you have to submit that. I, because.
We did. We've submitted it twice now.
You can take what you have before or what, or what Mark just showed and, and present that. It's just that we, as part of the record, we take official vote.
Yeah. Attorney DeShane, you, you, you resubmitted because you wanted the benefit of getting the full, the full board to vote, right? That's the waiver, the fee, you're, you're resubmitting your proposal, right?
Well, yes, we wanted the benefit of having all, a full board in voting on the proposed definitive plan. Yes.
Yeah. So are you, are you opposed to, to waiting for the board, the board to vote until Bob has a chance to do a sidewalk?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just expressing my concern that it doesn't sound like the board knows what it wants to do, but rather wants to take more time to consider it, including let Mr. Sheppard get up to speed. And I have no issues with all of it. I just a little concern that there's still a question of whether you want us to do an OSRD or not, and whether or not. OSRD or not and whether or not eight lots is the right number. That is concerning to me. But of course, of course, we're going to provide you all the time you need and anything you need to make that vote. I just wanted to express my concern that we put a lot of time and effort into the preliminary process and I, I just don't know if I'm hearing that we accomplished anything.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't think.
But of course, we're going to give you all the time you want.
Okay. All right. Uh, anything further from the board before we go to the audience?
I had just one question, the origin of the name Colonel Rolls. Is this something historical with Westford I wasn't aware of?
Uh, I believe it's one of the, uh, prior owners of the land.
So, let me, what's the board's pleasure? There's four of us. Do we, do we want three people voting on the decision or Bob, do you feel comfortable voting on conventional versus open space and yield without having done the site walk?
I would prefer the site walk just to understand the topography, but I'm fairly, I'm, the only thing I'm disappointed with is I did not get a copy of the conventional plan in my packet, so I don't have the benefit of that. So, that's my only struggle here. If I could just have that brought up on the screen again, because did I miss it? Was that in our packet?
No, it wasn't.
No.
Matt, can you go back up to page one?
So it's in page 135. Conventional plan.
Oh, is it there?
Yeah. And if I may Dylan, I mean, I do feel somewhat for the applicant here in that it is time and money that they've been before us and they did follow our direction in our comments. You know, to have them, I think it's what, 135 is the conventional plan.
I've got.
Um, and I appreciate Bob wanting to get up to speed. Certainly, I wouldn't want him to vote without having all the full information, but I think, in my opinion, we can vote for, for the open space, uh, number at this point, at least to give them some further direction and then go back and answer, answer more of our questions and, and we can get into the more nitty gritty of it. But, uh, to just, I feel like we're kind of stringing them along here a little bit.
Again, I'm, I'm willing to vote. I mean, I'm prepared to vote now. I did the site walk, but I, I did, you know, I thought it was a, a good suggestion by Kate to give Bob the opportunity to do a site walk before he casts a vote on this.
All paper anyway, the paper plan.
Yeah, I'm the only one, I have a question. I'm looking at that lot four, boy, that lot four on the conventional, I'm trying to see where you placed the house. Wow. Okay.
Where, where would it go first?
Yeah, the house with, with a label of, uh, is on the, uh, plan that's on the screen. So it meets the 50-foot setback and the 30-foot setback.
It's a small lot, but it is a building envelope there. So, and again, Bob, we had this big discussion of whether or not it's appropriate to grant them the two lots that would cross the wetlands because whether or not they would get that through conservation commissions. And so we again came to a, you know, a, a somewhat of a compromise to say, well, you know, maybe they won't get both, uh, maybe they'd get one and instead of nine, we go to seven. Um, and I think that's how we worked out for the, uh, for the open space plan.
Yep.
So I, I'm prepared to vote Dylan.
Yep. Uh, Bob, what, what are, what are your thoughts? I mean, we're, I think we can, uh, we can probably wait till the next meeting if you'd like to do that site walk between now and then before we take this vote? Or if you're comfortable, we can vote on it.
I'm comfortable making the vote at this time, but I, I am going to try to get out there immediately and do a site walk.
It's beautiful.
And, um, part of that site walk is I would like to have confirmation of those stone walls that you mentioned, Dylan, uh, and make sure that the plan is accurate in showing all of the stone walls, which it, as your comment, it does not.
There's a lot of them up there. Okay. All right. Well, if we're prepared to vote, then, uh, we need a motion.
I move that we accept eight as the conventional yield for this, uh, parcel. For this, uh, application.
That adequate second, I guess?
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Aye.
I say aye.
I move that we, uh, direct the applicant to go forward with the open space residential plan rather than a conventional yield plan.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right. So we've addressed that business. Uh, is there anything else from the board? Otherwise, I think we need to go to the audience for comments perhaps?
Good.
Or do you want, do we want to discuss the open space plan in more detail than we already have?
Well, we're going to be talking about it the next time anyway, after, um.
Yep.
After engineering looks, we've given comments.
So that's a good, that's a good question before we go to the audience comments. Uh, Paul, is, is there, what is your timeframe right now? What does the engineering department's workload look like right now? And, um, when do you think you would have a chance to, uh, dig into this plan and review it?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the, respecting the, the workload that we have. The board knows that we are reduced staff right now and, um, covering more bases than we normally would have, but, uh, could the applicant please describe their timeline? Do they plan on cutting down trees in September and putting in foundation in October? Or what, what's, uh, what is the applicant's intention?
Well, if we have to wait that long, I guess we will.
So they're ambitious to, to move forward. I.
We are. And, and just to update the board on our timeline, uh, the notice of intent has not been submitted yet. And with that submittal, which should occur in the next week or so, um, we'll also be updating some of the stormwater management provisions that are required as part of that submittal. Uh, right now I've shown basic drainage calculations that show that the drainage system works. I just need to provide additional drainage information to satisfy the stormwater management requirements of, uh, the notice of intent application. So that will, that will also be part of Paul's review, but he should be getting that in the next week or so.
Okay. Uh, so Paul, I guess my question is, given, given the resource constraints on your side and the applicant's urgency, um, would there be benefit for us to see if the applicant would, you know, be willing to, uh, you know, supplement your team with some third-party peer review or, or is that not necessary in this case?
Um, I, I don't think this is a, a project that's appropriate for peer review, honestly, um, especially where they've already conceded to the private road. Um, that does clear up some issues for us. I just don't think we can have this ready in two weeks. It, you know, it's beyond that, uh, you know, if, I, I would like to be the, the one to surprise you all and have it done. I just don't think with the projects that we have outgoing right now to bid and ongoing in construction and, uh, and others that we're working on, that that's just feasible in two weeks. We're spending, we're spending more time in the field now inspecting, uh, projects. So that's, that's an issue for us.
So is September 21, which is our next meeting feasible? Or do you think we should be looking at October 5th then?
No, no, I, I, I think September is, is more reasonable for us. Um, if, especially if, um, I'm sure, uh, my colleague, Mr. Slager will make himself available to, uh, to meet with us, um, and, and help streamline some of our, our usual comments. Yep. So that September is, is certainly doable for us.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else from the board, let's, uh, let's open it up to the public for, uh, discussion. I think we're going to have some interest.
Um, Darren, I do have, and Dylan, geez, sorry. I do have some, um, questions for you. So I will start with Daniel Williams. Mr. Williams, I am trying to unmute you. It does not seem to be working. You may need to mute yours. There you go. Williams?
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Great. So I, I have a number of comments and questions. But I did, before I get into those, I wanted to address, um, some of, I think it was Dylan's questions in regards to the stone wall. I'm not, I haven't walked around the entire property, but I was friendly with the prior owner of the Hartford Road plots and, um, I have walked over there on occasion and there's definitely an existing rock wall, at least, um, on lots eight, seven and six that cut across horizontally, uh, from west to east or east to west, whichever way you look at it. So there's definitely at least that there. There may be others that I'm not aware of, but I know for sure that there is a significant, uh, rock wall there that extends through, I think, all three of those properties. Um, and, um, I, I'm not sure where the discussion went, if there is still going to be a site visit. I had requested, uh, to attend the last one, but I think the applicant had requested specifically that only the planning board attend. Um, so if there is actually another site visit, I would like to attend so that I can offer my perspective as well, um, and not just have it, um, coming from the applicant itself. Is that something that is reasonable to do if there will be planning, uh, site visit?
I, I don't have the authority to grant that without talking to my client.
Yeah, I think, um, Mr. Williams, I think that that is definitely, it's up to the applicant as the, uh, they, they are the property owners. Uh, Rebecca or Jeff, do you have any, any insight there? I feel like in general, in the past, we've done a lot of site walks. Most of them don't involve abutters, although there have been a couple I can recall where abutters could tell that we were walking the site and kind of, kind of showed up. So what's, what's the protocol there?
So you're correct Dylan.
Yeah. Go ahead.
We can't compel the applicant to allow other abutters or third-party folks onto the lot without their permission.
So, Mr. Williams, I appreciate, you know, your position certainly on this. I, I think it's one of those situations where it's, um, it's entirely up to the applicant as far as, um, you know, inviting people to walk their property and, and participate in a site walk.
Well, I would request that the applicant, uh, be notified by my intent or my want to attend the site meeting and I'd hope that they would be able to accommodate that. I'd be happy to sign any kind of waivers that I'm not going to sue if I trip and fall and hurt myself, if that's what the concern is. I hope they'd be open to allow the planning board to have as much information as possible, uh, rather than excluding, uh, somebody that's willing to participate and offer some, uh, input. Um, the other thing I, I wanted to address in regards to the eight lots, um, versus nine lots, my understanding when we had discussed that in prior meetings, that there was still going to be soil testing done. I know the applicant has expressed his, um, desire not to disturb the wetlands, but it was my understanding that the, are the review process in order to confirm if eight lots were still able to be, um, put in the open space, uh, plan, that the soil testing still had to happen on those other lots to ensure that the conventional plan would in fact allow it. Is that still going to occur before a definitive lot number is determined?
If I may, um, lots on the conventional plan, the two lots on the other side of the brook, um, we discussed the testing over there and we determined that we weren't going to do any testing because it would require crossing the brook with a, um, an excavator. And since we weren't going to develop the land anyway, why, why do that and disturb not only the wetland, but some of the upland areas as well as we'd have to get through there with an excavator and take trees down? Um, I did point out that the soil in that location was very similar to the rest of the soil on the site and that I saw no issues with, um, having, being able to obtain, uh, passing tests in that area. Uh, and the prior board, uh, was comfortable with that discussion and, and felt that, um, the testing we had on the other lots was sufficient.
I don't recall that. I recall, um, you making that comment, but I don't recall the planning board ever commenting one way or the other. And if there's going to be walking trails through there, they would have to be disturbance to the, um, the wetlands anyway. Does the, uh, planning board have any thoughts on whether that's required or the town engineers?
Well, uh, I would defer to the town engineers to say whether it's required or not. I do recall a conversation with the applicant where, um, we talked in detail about the soil testing that had been done on the side of the parcel that is proposed for development under the open space plan. And I do also recall the conversation about saying, you know, does it make sense to, you know, essentially disturb the wetlands enough to bring a, a backhoe or some sort of, you know, major excavator across into that parcel C, uh, for the sake of doing soil testing somewhere where there's no intention of ever putting a house? I do recall that conversation. Uh, I can't at this time remember if that was like while we were walking the site or if that came up in public meeting, but it was probably during the public hearing. Um, so I, I do recall that. I don't know what the other board's members' recollection is, but I would, I would defer to town engineering to say whether or not it is, you know, required to arrive at a, or, or else town staff to say if it's required to arrive at a yield. I don't believe that it is. Again, Mr. Williams, this is where we arrived at the eight, you know, units, not, not nine.
So, Mr. Chair, Town Engineer, I, I can, I can and will independently review the USDA soil maps and see, uh, if I concur with, uh, Mr. Slager's, uh, assessment that the soils are similar. Uh, these are very reliable, uh, maps in my experience and, uh, that, that could be a starting point. It, it will at least allow me to represent to the board that there is a very high probability that the soils are as Mr. Slager has described or that there is some question. Um, I, I say that in the same time I want to ask Mark here now, is that what the soil maps are going to show me, Mark? Or?
Yeah. There's actually, the soil maps are provided in the drainage report.
All right. Yeah. So I can independently, uh, verify that. And then there are other less intrusive, we don't, you know, if you don't, uh, want to require a deep hole, uh, test, which is a 10-foot excavation into underlying and naturally occurring materials, uh, we can go out with a spoon, which is less intrusive. It's a hand-operated auger and my body steps will get the work out of a lifetime, but we can go out and, and, uh, and do some kind of, you know, spoon analysis to see if there are materials present within the first four or five feet that would be, you know, uh, different than what the soil maps represent. I mean, I can offer you that.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you, Paul.
Dylan, this is Jeff. I think the planning board has some discretion. They're certainly allowed, I mean, the burden proof is on the applicant, but the board has some discretion to weigh the evidence is necessary to determine the yield. So if the evidence they provide you is not enough, you can require, to your opinion, you can require more. If you feel as though soil testing in combination with soil maps is adequate for If you feel as though soil testing in combination with soil maps is adequate for this purpose, I think you have a lot of discretion.
Great, thank you, Jeff. So, Mr. Williams, I guess the way that we'll, uh, act on that is we'll, we'll, uh, ask Paul to provide feedback based on his independent, uh, evaluation of the soil maps. And based on that, you know, I'll solicit the opinion of the board at the next conversation, uh, at the next, uh, public hearing as to whether or not, uh, we have sufficient reasonable evidence to, uh, assume that, you know, the parcel C open space lot has soil that's consistent with the soil maps, and, and therefore we have no reason to question whether or not those would be able to be turned into, uh, building lots.
That's fair enough, I appreciate your willingness to look into it, at least, um, to get a, a general sense and, and, uh, independent review, uh, so that's very much appreciated. And really, now I'm just, uh, now I'm just getting into the, the crux to my questions, and I, I did submit, um, three questions over to the planning board, I assume, uh, that those were reviewed, and I, based on some of the comments, I, I take that you have looked at them. The one, uh, where I just heard that the preliminary decision is non-binding, the first one probably isn't that big of a deal. But I did notice that the decision only referenced Advisory Comments four and five, uh, for Star Circle, and did not, um, include Noonan Way and the Flag Road lots, um, in that decision. But I did hear Kate mention that, uh, earlier, that, um, that the buffer was complied for those. So I don't know if we need to update that decision, or if that's good enough the way it is, and based on the additional comments that the planning boards had in the recent mission process, if that's good enough.
Uh, well, I don't wanna speak for the entire board, but I'll speak for myself, Mr. Williams. I mean, I, I will, I will be certainly, um, asking the applicant to, uh, go into a lot of detail about the buffer that's provided from, you know, uh, all of the lots that exist on, uh, Star Circle and, uh, Noonan Way and, and Flag Road. Well, I'm not quite sure where that abuts this parcel in looking at this, but yeah. Uh, when we talk about buffer on these open space plans, generally speaking, we're looking for buffer and some sort of separation from any of the existing, uh, developments that are in the immediate vicinity.
Okay, very good. Um, and I know, um, part of the prior meetings that there was, you can talk about the 7.1.6, and it was my understanding based on re-reviewing the meeting, um, videos, that the board was in uh, favor of the 100-foot buffer in this situation from a, uh, open space buffer, from the respect that it's a very different density development being pushed right up against a, uh, larger or a less dense development. Is that the planning board's, um, opinion that that 7.1.6 does apply to that 100-foot open space?
So, the bylaw is sort of uncomfortably fuzzy, I would say, in this area. I think a lot of members of the board have a different interpretation of that 100-foot buffer, and I think a lot of applicants have different interpretations of that 100-foot buffer in the open space and flexible development language of the bylaw.
So just try, so does that mean that, um, where, where would that 100%, 100-foot open space buffer apply then, in, in the board's opinion, or the applicant's opinion? It sounds like, there's definitely a, a reference to it. It sounded like from those planning board meetings, I put lots of, uh, references to the tapes. How they, my opinion was that the planning board, um, indicated it would apply for this development. I definitely don't see this on the, the plans. So it makes it really hard to discuss the plans, I think, because if you apply the 100%, 100-foot buffer, that would change the configuration quite a bit.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, this is Jeff, I can add one comment.
Yep, please.
So, it is one of our least favorite sections of the zoning bylaw, and as we talk with this applicant and other applicants, I do wanna point out one, one thing. It is construed by different people, different ways. But what I will say is that in the flexible development, it actually does say, buffer area of 100 feet shall be provided at the perimeter of the property. So, in the next section of the zoning bylaw, for a different development that I believe came out afterwards, they explicitly state that there shall be a 100-foot buffer about the perimeter of the property. To me, if this were a flexible development, that would be very clear. But we're, we're in the open space, and it's falling under the common land section. And to me, it is, it's not saying that, but I can totally understand why you would wanna construe it that way. But it, it's not saying that explicitly like it is a flexible development section. So I think the applicant may have an opinion as to that, well.
I, I certainly do, and if the board would like to hear it, I'm prepared to provide it.
Well, I think, I mean, Mr. Williams, I assume you'd like to hear the applicant's position on that.
I would, I think, um, perhaps more applicable would be here the zoning board's ruling on that. Um, because they're ultimately the ones that would have to hear any appeals to that decision, right?
So they would be the authority to weigh in on any appeal of either an administrative decision, or ultimately if the planning board's decision was appealed, uh, they would not be the one, you would be appealing that to court.
Sorry, can you say that again?
If there's an administrative decision, the zoning board of appeals would be the governing authority locally first. If you're appealing a planning board decision, it would, that would not go straight to zoning board. You would be appealing it pursuant to the general laws, to either land court or some other court.
With that, Attorney DeShane, maybe you'd like to offer your perspective on the 100-foot, uh, buffer?
Well, I think in, in the general tenet of regulation interpretation, a, a court will always look at what, um, was stated and what wasn't stated. It is clear, as was pointed out, that within the flexible development bylaw, the bylaw is clear. It requires a 100-foot buffer zone around the entire project. There is no such words within the open space bylaw. And if, if court's gonna say, if you wanted a 100-foot buffer, you should have put it in there, which you did under the flexible development bylaw. If the same language was inflexible, then you could argue that it was the intent in both cases to require it, and that the language was what it was. But the fact that you expressly required it under one, but don't expressly require it another, certainly supports the idea that there is no 100-foot buffer requirement. And quite frankly, if you look at 7.1.6, I don't see the word buffer zone anywhere in there whatsoever. What it talks about is that any land abutting a lot, and I, excuse me, I will go directly to it, so I don't misspeak. It says, "All land within 100 feet of any building lot shown on an open space residential development shall be designated as open space." It does not speak to buffers or anything else, but the disposition of land. And what makes it confusing is, if it's all land that's not within a lot, what is the roadway? The roadway is not a lot. Therefore, if it abuts a lot under this bylaw and the interpretation that people are taking, that roadway must be open space. Now, I know that sounds ridiculous, but if you're gonna say all land around the outer thing of this needs to be 100 feet, there's no basis for it. The, the only application of this that we have seen is in an instance where we had an open space subdivision, which had open space parcels. However, there was a recreational parcel that was located within the project. It wasn't open space, it wasn't a lot. And we were held to the standard that that recreational parcel, in order to satisfy this requirement, could not be within 100 feet of any lot, because it wasn't open space. And so, we had to either move the recreational space 100 feet from any lot, or we had to show that we had 100 feet of buff, of open space between it. In fact, what we ended up doing is getting a variance from the zoning board to allow us to put the recreational field, which wasn't open space, within 100 foot feet of a lot. There, I just can't understand where we get from this, that we're required to have 100-foot buffer around the entire project, where if that was the intent, why wouldn't it state it clearly as it does under the flexible development? I've asked for an interpretation of this for years now, guys, and, and it's just not coming. But I don't see the word buffer in there, I don't see a requirement that we have 100-foot buffer. All it says is that all land within 100 feet of a building lot shall be open space. Now, how do you meet that with your roadway? And in fact, I think if you look at our plan, except for the roadway, all land on this project that is within 100 feet of a lot is in fact open space. If I'm satisfying this requirement. I, I, I'm open to hear another justifiable interpretation, but I, I, I just can't see where this says, we're required to have 100-foot buffer zone around an open space project.
Thank you, Attorney DeShane. So, Miss, uh, Mr. Williams, what you, you know, you, you, uh, welcome to the, uh, recurring conversation topic that we talk about with every, almost every open space residential development plan that, uh, that we see, uh, and hear as a board. So, um, do you have any, any other questions, uh, for the applicant or for the board?
Well, I guess I'm confused as to where that leaves us now. Um, so is it the, is the planning board saying that the buffer and the open space and the conforming to 7.1.6 doesn't mean that 100-foot open space? Hey, so I'm not gonna say buffer, but open space plot of land, or whatever you wanna call it. Does that not apply in this development? Because I think it, it was very, and, and if you look at my questions, I thought a lot of, um, times in prior planning board meetings where it seemed that the planning board was indicating that there was a requirement for 100%, 100-foot open space area and buffering, and, uh, but I'm not seeing that on the plans that were submitted by the applicant. And if we continue down this path, I'm a little concerned that, uh, you know, we could be wasting everyone's time, because the plans don't really seem to indicate that. And the plans that are on the screen here are a little different than the ones that were submitted in the, in the, uh, meeting packet as well.
If you wanna review, you know, prior discussions with planning board and all that, perhaps you can review prior plans that have been approved by the board too, because this is very consistent with all the other prior OSRD plans. There has never been a requirement that an OSRD plan have a 100-foot open space or even a 50-foot open space completely around the development, um, as a requirement. Uh, it's never been approved that way in Westford.
Yeah, so, Mr. Williams, I can tell you in my, you know, now, three, or three years on this board, uh, seeing, I don't know, 10 to 12 open space development plans come before me. Uh, for sure, this is not the first, uh, proposal or project that we've seen that has building lots that abut other neighborhoods, or that don't have open space around them. Um, what, just being, I guess, completely, uh, you know, open and transparent, what we try to do is navigate the bylaws as best we can to ensure that the amount of open space in the development is consistent with, uh, the, the bylaws and the standards that we wanna see. And we do our best to, uh, discuss with the applicants providing as much, uh, buffer and, and separation of the new development from existing developments to screen that from abutters. That's, that's the position that we find ourselves in, we do our best to navigate that. And in my sort of opening comments, um, to the applicant in, in this discussion, you know, I, I sort of lamented that, um, that there, that there's not more separation, you know, between lots five through eight from the neighbors as I was hoping to see on this plan. And, and I think what you will see in subsequent meetings is, is a lot of conversation around, you know, uh, camouflage separation, screening, I think you've heard multiple board members already, you know, mentioned the need for more than just, you know, no cut in this case.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot, one more piece of history. When the open space bylaw was originally passed in town, um, many people took advantage of it because of the many benefits it provided, including, uh, providing additional open space. However, um, I will admit that many of those early plans essentially showed a 50, or a 60, or a 100-foot buffer around the entirety of the project, that was the open space. And the boards were very adverse to that. They were adverse to us putting the open space around the outer ring of the project because they felt it created open space that was not usable, not accessible, and quite frankly became a dumping grounds for people off their backyard. And so, we were, we were directed to start providing open space plans that provided for contiguous, large portions of open space adjacent to the project, not a thin strip surrounding it. So if the intent was to require a buffer zone of open space around these projects, why were we directed by the board that that wasn't the intention of open space plans, but rather it was to, to create large contiguous parcels? And I know some of you, somebody has to be as old as me, or been around long enough to remember that. That we were told, we don't like this strip around, we want big pieces. So, again, all the evidence and all the history has pointed to never requiring a defined buffer. Although I do agree with you, Mr. Dylan, that the board, because it is a special permit, always does its best to convince us or to direct us to provide adequate buffers to neighbors. Not because it's required under the bylaw, but rather that it's the intention to make for good planning and good projects. And we do believe we've always made an attempt to do that. And I am sure we will look again at the, the boundary between lots six, seven, and eight. But I do question the requirement that we provide greater buffers, and that our land is, we are limited on what we can do to our land than the very people who are complaining. Our house is a father away from the property line than, than Mr. Williams. He's allowed to clear directly to his property line, you're telling us we can't. I, I, I just don't see the equity in that. I certainly say we will do our best, we will provide the best buffer we can, but not at the expense of producing a, a subdivision that is, is, is negatively impacted by providing buffers to someone who didn't provide that same courtesy to their neighbors.
Okay, um, Mr. Williams, do you have any further questions? Otherwise, I'm, I'm gonna move on to the next, um, uh, you know, member of the public who might have comments.
Not this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. Rebecca, do we have other, other people from the public who'd like to speak?
We do. Uh, let's see, Mr., Mr. Galogly. Let's see, Logley. Um, you will have to unmute yourself, if you can hear me. Um, I think, unless Matt, can you hear me, can you unmute him?
He's muted, he's self-muted, so he'll have to unmute himself.
Okay, I'm gonna, oh, there he is.
I've just gone unmuted.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, thank you, uh, for the opportunity to speak, I'm Colonel Buzz Galogly. I, uh, was an abutter, uh, in the preliminary planning, uh, activities that went on at one Patton Lane, which, uh, would have separated the, uh, the preliminary, uh, property, uh, plan by a, by a stone wall from my property. And, uh, I, uh, I applaud the, uh, the board, I followed this from the very start, and I applaud the board for coming to a decision that will, uh, will allow for open space and, uh, a decision on the open space plan that, uh, was approved at this board meeting. I have one question, and I'd like to, uh, basically for my assurance, I'd like to understand, uh, what the status of the land that's not going to be included, that was in the preliminary plan, uh, and what that status will be with regard to the- that was in the preliminary plan, and what that status will be with regard to the town. Is it town property? Is it open space? Where where what can be done with that land? Yes.
Sorry, I was muted. Can I answer that?
Yeah, please.
The the open space bylaw, sir, requires that the open space, first of all, be subject to a conservation restriction, which will, in perpetuity, guarantee its non-development. It 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 and it is one of the few land use laws that operate in perpetuity. So, once there's a conservation restriction placed on this land, it cannot be developed in the future. The other option is that the land would be donated or provided to the town, to the Conservation Commission. Yet, it would still have to be subject to a conservation restriction. So, in any event, whether it's ultimately controlled by the Homeowners Association or whether it is ultimately controlled by the town of Westford, in either event, it will have a conservation restriction, which will prevent its development in perpetuity.
All right, well, thank you very much. That's good clarification.
Okay. Thank you. Any any further comments, Mr. Galugli?
There, I was just muted and unmuted. No, thank you very much. I appreciate the board's ability to withstand the time constraints that a lot of us have. Thank you.
Sure. Rebecca, any any other members of the public who'd like to speak?
Yeah, I have one more person who will, it looks like they want to speak, and then I'm going to read some comments after that, so.
And and just a reminder, Mr. Galugli did state his address as One Patton Lane. But if if the next speaker can just make sure to to mention your address as well as your name, will you give your comment, please?
Mr. Narinian?
Thanks, Rebecca. Hi, everybody. Jason Narinian, 19R Flag Road. If you could scroll down just a little bit, I'd like to call attention to Lot Five. I've got a few concerns there. First, I'd like to make some comments. I'd like to update the decision to to read Star Circle as well as Newton Way and Flag Road, just so that the 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 buffer concerns are addressed and carry over. So, just to clarify, the the stone walls that were discussed earlier along Lot Five, that whole property line from the edge of of the the building on Lot Six all the way down to the end of the parcel D open space, that's all an existing rock wall. Just so you're aware of that. Now, my 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 concern here is that with with in particular to part Lot Number Five is the corner of that lot is about 30 feet from that existing rock wall. And it looks like on the grading plan that it looks like there's a very steep cut down right at the property line. It looks like there's a retaining wall or something planning on going in there. My concern obviously is, one, that this buffer isn't being respected. And and two, that what with that retaining wall is going to do to existing vegetation on 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 my property as well as what that means as far from a land clearing perspective moving into Lot Number Five. So, it looks like, I I appreciate everyone making some concerns for lots six, seven, and eight. My concern here is Lot Number Five in that that my my previous comments were, it looks like there was nothing done from my previous concerns. I'm going to restate that concern that there's a lot of clearing going on directly on on the wall right on my property there on Lot Five. Looks like there's no buffer at all. So, some clarity and comment would be appreciated.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Mr. Narinian. And and certainly, I I just want to make sure that, you know, Lot Five is definitely in my consideration. I think I think other board members as well. I think we're looking at five through eight. But either Mr. Slager or or Attorney DeShane, any comments on what that retaining wall is on Lot Five? Why it's needed? And any, and maybe answer Mr. Narinian's concerns regarding vegetation and and the impact of that 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 wall could have on his property?
Yeah, I mean, if we, some of you remember out on the sidewalk that that's kind of near the top of a knoll. So, in order to make the house and the driveway work, we're actually cutting down on that knoll. But we have absolutely no intention of cutting anything down on anyone else's property. There is some grading that's going to be required right up to the to the lot line on the corner of that house. And it's going to be a three-to-one slope coming down and maybe a wall required, depending on the final grading of the house. That wall is probably just going to be an integrated block wall, maybe two to three feet high. Again, it's going to be adjacent to the stone wall, so there's no disturbance to the stone wall, no disturbance to the vegetation on the other side of the wall. If there are, you know, tree roots that are right near there, we will have to take that into consideration so that it doesn't affect vegetation on someone else's land. Again, it's it's just something that needs to be done in order to accommodate that house. It's grading. It's not to say that we couldn't apply additional revegetation in that area if it's appropriate.
Thanks for coming. I'd like to just clarify, I'm not I'm not necessarily concerned of vegetation being removed on my property. I know that's not possible, you know. However, it it appears that you plan on clearing from the corner of that house up to the property line. Is that is that the case?
Yes.
Okay, and 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 that that'll just kind of reconfirm my concern here that, you know, no buffer is being considered there, which I think ties back to allowable lots for this determination. And I would ask Bob Schaefer, when you Schaffer, excuse my pronunciation there, that when you do do this walkthrough, please look at this. The the, as he, as Mr. Slager mentioned, this is the top of a knoll. There's considering, considerate grading that's required here. There's some beautiful oak trees that are tied right up into that wall. So, I I'd be concerned that any any clearing there would significantly affect more than than what's in that area. So, please take that into account on your next site visit. I'd be eager to hear your opinion on this because it's that Lot Number Five, this just to me, just doesn't look like there was any effort put in to provide any buffer whatsoever as the accommodations for some of those other lots on here. So, it looks like Lot Five is the one that unfortunately gets singled out here as, you know, a lot that is, you know, going to significantly impact the abutters, specifically me.
Okay, thank you.
I have one last comment, too, just regarding a previous discussion regarding connecting all the open space. Is that is that is that, did I understand that correctly? That all these open space parcels need to be connected by open space to each other? So, again, I would ask, you know, along that line there, is that going to be a sliver of open space going from Lot Six down to parcel D? Or did I misunderstand that requirement?
No, we're not intending to put any open, narrow open states, space strips along that side of the property.
And from the planning board's perspective, what we've done in the past, and we'll get into this probably in in some upcoming meetings with the applicant, is, you know, we'll generally try to figure out how they propose to make the open space parcels available for use by the public. So, obviously, there's there's already some hiking trails through the area. So, we'll probably, I'm sure you'll hear some members of the board ask, you know, the applicant to provide some representation in the plan set of of trails or other ways that folks in the subdivision, and I think in this case, perhaps from even outside the subdivision, can take use of of the great open space that's being preserved by using this kind of development plan.
Okay, thank you. And I just lastly, just if if the the plan is to then clear up from Lot Five to my property line, that there's some consideration for some of the mature trees that are right along that line to not only impact the buffer I have, but also preserve the 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 beauty of this lot. As you guys have pointed out multiple times, it's, there's a ton of wildlife back here. You know, I've had coyotes, bobcats, deer, turkeys, can name, you know, every other thing around here, too. I I would just hope that we're as gracious as possible here when it comes to removing trees.
Yep. All right. Yep, thank you for your comments. All right, Rebecca, anybody else who'd like to speak? Or do you just have some comments to give on folks' behalf?
I think I'm just gonna, looks like I just have some things to read.
Okay.
So, Joan Parker Roach has submitted a number of comments. I'll just read right through them. And I don't have her address, but she says, as an abutter of this proposed development, we support this. And we also support the preserving of the existing stone walls and the boulders that are there. Please save open space and support Kate's proposal. Please save those stone walls and boulders if possible. We are so supportive of what Doug and his group are doing. He is trying to preserve as much open space and conservation as possible. Colonel and Muriel Rolls, to your question, Bob. Colonel and Muriel Rolls were the former owners of the pasture land that the new developer wants to honor. Our father bought part of the Rolls land over 50 years ago. Please plan land for walking trails, supporting Mark's proposals. We are so very appreciative for the care for the soil. We are also very concerned about the rock wall that comes up through what looks like Lot Two and Lot Three. Very grateful for the thoughtfulness that you all are taking, talking to care for what is there now that we want, now that we want to save if possible. Okay. Um, okay, I think that's, I think that's it. And the other comment says it wasn't for public cons, well, I guess I have to read it now. It's from Anita Tonakarn Niguyan. I'm sorry if I'm butchering the name. I believe this is our new select board member, but and she just says, hi, no need to read my comments. It's just a friendly note. Thanks to you both, Rebecca and Jeff, for your hard work. I've been watching on YouTube. Appreciate your time and energy and long hours that you put into work, into your work, and to everyone, really. So, there's that. And I believe that's all.
Excellent. Okay. All right, so we've heard from the public. Back to the board really quickly, does anybody have any final thoughts, comments for the applicant?
Just one thing, Dylan. Mr. Slager, if you could, just to take into consideration in your next rendition of Mr. Narinian's concerns, I don't know if anything can be done, maybe moving Lot Three, Lot Four, just sliding Lot Five up a little bit, make more of a buffer there with that with that steep grade and then maybe lose the necessity of that retaining wall, which I'm sure would save the applicant money anyway. I know that they would appreciate any that could be done there. But I do also appreciate you guys looking at Mr. Williams' comments and and doing what you can for that as well. So, thank you.
Mike, I think that's an interesting comment. I was I I was thinking the same thing, looking at Lot Five. I was wondering if it could be moved a little north. If Lot Four was sort of turned around the the cul-de-sac roundabout a little bit. But but we'll leave that to the applicant to come back with.
I'm not a very good engineer.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So.
Start Bob first.
Okay, Bob.
So, after hearing Mr. Narinian and his comments, it's caused me to look at the plan, and I'm noticing on here now there are a number of what appear to be retaining walls. Looks like to the northwest side of Lot Eight. There's one on Lot Six close to the road. And then there's some on Lot Two and Lot One. I, that's got me a little concerned. I would like to at least see some side perspectives on those. Like to get a sense of what those are looking like, how high they're going to be. There's also one that appears to be very close to the rock wall as well on Lot One in the corner where Lot One, Two, and Three all come together. So, I think that's someplace I'd recommend that the board pay some special attention to in the future are these walls.
It's a good call out. Kate, did you have something?
I just want to remind Doug that it's your call. Our next meeting is at the end of September, when I will not be available. I mean, I can mull in once. So, it's your call whether or not you want to have it continued to our September 21 meeting or go to October.
What's your pleasure, Doug? Would you like a 9:21 or 10:05?
Ah, boy, I I I, it's tough when I don't have the benefit of being able to ask my client. Mr. Slager, might you have some insight in that?
The other option that I don't know for town engineering is we had a special meeting before the town, just just for this with no new new hearing. I don't know if engineering would be ready, though.
That's that's difficult to predict.
And everybody, all the other board members are like, no, please, no.
Well, I I do appreciate that, but I I it it seems like a lot of effort if then and then, you know, if engineering's not done, we've we've put a lot of effort and people have made time, and yet we might not be as effective as we could be. I I think to err on the side of caution, I I would ask the board to consider continuing us to the 21st. That will give me an opportunity to discuss with my client whether it is his preference to a deal with your absence, Kate, or I can, I could send in a continuance. Whereas if I just say October 5th, I am potentially in hot water. So, if with the board's, you know, acceptance, I I guess we would push to the 21st and 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 hope that you'd be able to mull it in. Although if my client says that the that the delay is not critical, I will notify staff immediately of a request to continue.
Sounds fair. And and you feel like you've heard plenty from us and from the from the public on on some tweaks and revisions? Any further?
Oh, yeah, we we have some homework to do. I get it. We'll, you know, we'll do it.
We appreciate it. Okay, is there a motion then to continue to the 21st?
I have a question, yes. Bob, how would you like to coordinate a site visit? And is there any other board members that need to go out again? Otherwise, it could be just me and Bob and and the client. How should that be coordinated? Should I just work through Rebecca with that, or do you want to email me?
I guess put it out, yeah. I mean, Rebecca, do you mind coordinating that?
No, no, not at all. I'd be happy to do that. So, why don't I just, I'll I'll connect Bob and and Mark and let anyone else know what's going on if they want to join?
Yeah, let me, I mean, if I if I have a free day when you choose to do it, or if I have a gap in my schedule, I might pop out again. You know, I think we spent a couple of hours out there the first time, so so I'm not critical to it. But if my schedule's agreeable, I I might go for another walk up there.
Okay, I will let everyone know.
Thanks, Mark, for accommodating.
I was going to suggest maybe this Friday morning, if people are amenable to that.
Okay, I won't be available Friday morning.
Okay, so so we can sync offline, right, via email?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Any motion to continue to the 21st then?
To move.
I move that we continue to September 21st at the planning board meeting via web web access starting at 7:30 PM.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And I say aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Yep. Have a nice evening. Okay.
Darren's leaving? Nope.
Fearless Leader's back.
All right. All right, good stuff.
Alright, good stuff.
Welcome back.
Am I cameras?
There he is.
Alright, good work, alright, so, uh, we will continue on with, uh, general business in, uh, item D. Which is a discussion of proposed zoning bylaw amendment pertaining to drive-through facilities, so last time we talked about this. Uh, staff put together some information in our packet, I think primarily stuff that was from the last go-around when this went to a town meeting a while back, so I guess I'll, I'll give it to Rebecca or Jeff, if you guys wanna jump in.
Sure, hi Darren, uh, this is Jeff, so as requested the board had asked us to suggest some draft language for amending the zoning bylaws to perhaps authorize drive-throughs for restaurant facilities, which is currently prohibited, and of course, when, once we started looking, we found surprise, more flaws in our zoning bylaws, so if we look in appendix A, our table of principal uses. Thank you Matt for pulling that up there. It makes mention of restaurant. And it goes, thanks Matt. Uh, it says restaurant drive-in, it's saying it's allowed there. Depending on the district, so what we're trying to do is create a new line item that says restaurant drive-throughs. We would like to have that as both a principal and an accessory use, which would be appendix B, so even the other existing line item for, let's see, drive-through, drive-up and drive-through establishments. That's only in appendix A, principal uses, so we think that's a gap and it should also be included in appendix B where it's an accessory use. So first we like to take care of that housekeeping item. And then what Rebecca suggested, which I think is a good approach, is she took a look at where restaurants are allowed, which zoning districts. And mirrored that with the special permit line item for drive-through, so in other words, this would only be an option where restaurants are already allowed uh, within the zoning district, so just pair that up with that, and of course we found some other inconsistencies with our definitions section. We have another line item, um, in our table, talks about, I think it's drive-in restaurants, which is not defined in our zoning bylaw. So all we're really looking for the board tonight is to give us some direction. What do you want to happen with drive-through restaurants, we believe from what we took in from you last time, you want it to be authorized by special permit through the planning board. As at least accessory uses, perhaps principal uses, but in the same zoning districts that restaurants are allowed today. So that's like the first question, is, can you confirm that, or if you have a different approach?
Uh, that, that makes sense to me, that's, you know, I guess anybody else on the board, that, that makes sense to me unless anybody else has any other opinions. That's what I envisioned.
That's an interesting question, to whether or not a drive-in true, drive-in whatever, can be a, a principal use.
It can be. It can be, it's less common.
Right. Like the old, uh, photo booth, right, the old Kodak photo booth, right?
Photo mats.
Hey, we're, we're showing our wisdom, uh, but yes. Um, it could be, and who knows with, you know, the way things may be changing. You know, after COVID, you never know, there could be more opportunity for different types of establishments, so I think as a housekeeping item, it's good to, for both restaurants and not restaurants, I think it makes sense to cover it in both appendices for whether it's principal or accessory, and if we have your blessing to do that, we'll carry that forward with draft language.
Yep, sounds good.
And then
Out with, with the roller blades to your car.
That Sonic is the drive-in.
So drive-in is in the appendix A now. I don't think it's in appendix B off the top of my head, but it's also not defined, so is your preference to keep drive-in in the tables? Do you feel differently about drive-in versus drive-through? Just what's your, your thoughts and we'll just, it's not a heavy lift either way, we just need to know your preference.
I would say, I would say drive, define drive-through, I would even, I wouldn't rule out defining drive-in, but it's not in there, so.
Right.
I mean, I mean, drive-in is to me like, yeah, you pull up and you get you know, someone comes and gets, takes your order in your car and brings it and you eat in your car, it's not, that's not what we're talking about here, so. But yes, I would define drive-through as, like what we've done here.
Yeah, but
Go ahead Dylan.
Well, so I, that was exactly my question is, is, does it make sense for us to put a definition in for drive-in because in, in my mind, the drive-up or the drive-through is like, you, you're in, you know, you're picking up something to take it away and eat it somewhere else. Wherever that is, drive-in, like Sonic, right, you're gonna, you're planning to eat in your car, you're taking a pit stop on your, on your drive. Do, do we wanna define those two things and then, and then have both of these as uses in the bylaw? We're just pointing out it's a, it's a gap, because it's in the table, but it's not defined, so we could simply try to add a definition, so it's covered, or we can bury our head in the sand, but to me, I feel obligated to point it out, it's, it's kind of a an oversight now and it makes sense to address it.
Yep.
Unless you don't wanna take it on for this next town meeting.
Well, no, I think you're, the definition that's proposed here says, but not a drive-in restaurant, so.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a different animal, you know. Yeah.
Do you want drive-in restaurants in town?
No. No, I think, I think we should limit our discussion here to drive-through and, uh, and I like the fact that we've distinguished that it's not a drive-in, it's drive-through.
Okay, if that's the consensus, we will carry that forward.
Well, we know how difficult getting anything through town meeting is, so we start talking about drive-in restaurants, they're gonna get lost in the, uh, lost in the shuffle here. In my opinion.
Yeah.
There's been two attempts at, at drive-through. Uh, ninety, nineteen ninety-eight, and I don't know what the vote was, and then again in two thousand thirteen. And in two thousand thirteen, it was a hundred and fifty-six against seventy-one, and it failed.
Right, so, and you know, maybe maybe today it's more commonplace and we'll have a better, better shot at it. But, I think if we went to town meeting and said, hey, we wanna allow drive-throughs and drive-ins. Then you'd have a, a tougher time.
Yep. Okay, good.
Yeah.
And the last
I, I agree with you, but I would throw out the possibility that if you had both. By having both on the warrant and having both open for discussion. We would allow maybe one over another being acceptable. Um, we know that drive-through is gonna be a tough one up until now, I think maybe COVID will change that. I think we are trying to provide a service for residents, I also think that, you know part of me says, yeah, keep it simple, but I also see where the drive-in is gonna meet a new market niche, and I, I gotta sit here, I'm thinking now that, you know, stock on Sonic might be doing pretty good, because it's kind of a market niche that that addresses the, the issues we're seeing with COVID in terms of, um, folks wanting to go out and eat and stay in the safety of their car. But I do favor keeping it simple and keeping it as it is here with the, uh, drive-up, drive-through. But I do think that if we're gonna say not a drive-in restaurant, we might want to consider putting that definition in here.
Yeah.
Right, so we're just looking for direction and then we'll work with council to carry out your your, you know, what you want here, so.
It doesn't hurt to, it doesn't hurt to define drive, drive-in restaurant, right, I mean.
No, I think it helps.
Separate definition for drive-in restaurant. You know, we're, we're distinguishing the two.
Okay. Was it your thoughts then? That would leave? Hold on, let me find it. So we wouldn't have drive-in listed in the use table, either appendix A or B, right? But we would just define it so that that way if somebody came to us with a drive-in, we'd say this is not a drive-through?
I think we just define drive-through, and if it doesn't follow the definition, then I mean, I don't know why we would have to define drive-in if we're gonna define drive-through.
Because drive-in is in the table right now.
Oh, it is in the table now, okay, I'm sorry.
So, and it's listed and prohibited, but it's not defined, so we can talk with council and maybe the recommendation is, don't bother and put it on the list, or just add a simple definition, if there's a common one out.
I would agree with that, uh, the definition, yeah. Right.
So then another layer of the onion, which maybe needs to get discussed now, maybe not, is just curbside pickup, and I know folks may, that may mean a different thing to different people. Some people it might just mean pulling into an existing parking space. Um, some people might mean pulling in literally alongside a curb. And just while we're looking at this section, is this something that you feel we need to urgently address at this town meeting? Or do we have the luxury of more, you know, you don't need to define and say what it is to act on it through, say, site plan review. But, um, it's kind of related to some of these, so we just wanted to, if you wanna discuss it or not.
Aren't some restaurants in town doing this now, I feel like?
Yes, I think the difference with the, the, the drive-in and curbside pickup is that you're not sitting there eating at the curbside pickup. Uh, I think if you define the drive-in as basically a place where you stop and are served in your car, then you could differentiate that from curbside. Yeah, no, I think, I mean, I wouldn't even call it an accessory use, I mean, like you go to Chili's to-go, they have like three spots out back that have a sign that says Chili's to-go parking. They can utilize what park you want. They come out and give you your food and you pay them and you take off, so it's different than a drive-through, because you don't have the infrastructure. So I, it's not like you need a, a, a separate drive-through and traffic and everything else, it's more of a you know, you go to a place and they bring out your food, it's not.
So I, it, I started, I've been doing a lot of thing about this since I've talked to Jeff over the last few weeks about this. And that curbside pickup is kind of skirting the law. Especially with respect to how we've talked about drive-through and what town meeting has explained, expressed their view on this, that they do not want. The only difference is with curbside pickup is you place the order remotely, using the phone or the net. And then you come and pick it up. With drive-through, you, you allow the possibility of driving up, placing the order, paying at that point and picking it up at that window as well. But there are some real subtle, I think, legal differences here or non-differences between curbside versus drive-through.
I just, I think they're different animals, I mean, you can go to an existing restaurant now, you could probably you go, you could probably call an, ordering a Viva. And get down there and get it, and maybe they'll run out to your car for you, whereas you run in and get it, so. It's like
I'm in agreement, they're different animals, what I'm saying is, is we haven't really addressed the animal of the curbside pickup with our zoning bylaws.
But I, I, I don't know if there's much to, to really address, I mean, if you, if you have a restaurant and you, someone can call ahead and order and either pick it up or eat there. Right.
I, I wouldn't, let's, let's get the drive-through through first and then
Right.
Yeah. How life settles down after COVID, whether, I mean, the only reason we have pickup or curbside now is because of the whole COVID requirement.
Right.
With the exception of Chili's.
No, the ninety-nines has it too, right?
Yeah, exactly.
They, they had those before COVID, right?
Yep.
But they, they didn't go out to your cars anyway.
Yeah, they did, yeah, they, yeah, they, they wanted them to.
And they do. So, so it sounds like your approach for the short term is put drive-through restaurants in appendix A and B, special permit planning board mimic it in districts that restaurants are allowed. And add a definition for the, the drive-in, which isn't defined yet, but leave it unchanged in the table and prohibited.
Right.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
And what about, yeah, all that language that you gave to us, so you're proposing that, um, we try and, you just wanna stick with the, uh, tables for now.
Bob had asked for that reference information from a, a prior town meeting, we just provided that for information purposes to see what was contemplated previously.
Yeah.
Yep, cool. Yep, that makes sense, alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks Jeff. Alright, is that, is that your direction Jeff enough for, uh, for you guys to proceed?
Yes.
Alright, good. Alright, so our last items are, uh, review of minutes. So there were minutes from June fifteenth meeting, is there a motion to approve? Alright, any discussion?
No.
I had none, no comments, alright, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the fifteenth? Hello? Alright, so, uh, all those in favor of approving the June fifteenth, say aye, Mike. Aye. Dylan?
Aye.
Aye.
I say aye, Bob, I assume you'll abstain?
Same.
Alright, and then, uh, the next meeting, the next minutes were for July sixth, is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Alright, any, any comments?
I did on this one, does anybody else have comments, I'll let you go first.
Nope.
Nope.
Just a happy birthday, oh, page two seventy-one in our packet, which is page two of the minute. Um, all of my comments have to do with people not being able to vote. So, like, uh, it said on line fifty-nine that Rich began participating, but then on line sixty-one it said the board voted four zero zero.
Over, right?
So I just wanted to confirm, uh,
It's over, right?
Did we all vote on this? Or was it just going to bed?
Oh, which, which one is that, can you have the medicine for me?
That has to do with Dee proposing by law amendments. And Darren, who had come late.
Excuse me, if you're on a cell phone, please put your phone, we can't hear in this meeting, people on their cell phones, please mute.
I think you had too much to drink.
Alright, if you're on the, if you're on the phone, please mute.
So, I, I just wasn't sure on the vote for the zoning bylaw amendment. Because it said that, that Darren was participating, but the vote was only four to zero zero. So I, I wanted to confirm that's what the vote was.
I think so, because I, I didn't participate, there was a, there was a point where it says I joined, I rejoined the meeting. And it was probably after that, right?
Darren, it does say up under public hearing items, that they were taken out of order, you not being able to participate.
I got you.
There is a note in there where it starts.
Yeah, and then I, and then I, and then I joined the meeting later, so yeah. I think that's all stat Kate.
So we should have, with the end participating.
Don't drink it, honey, you have, you have too much wine, don't drink it.
All over the floor, hey Rebecca?
Let me try mut, muting everybody and seeing
It's not me. I'm not drinking on the job.
Alright, I muted everybody, it seems to be All right, I muted everybody. It seems to be better. So Kate, go ahead. Kate, yourself muted.
Kate, you have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I'm gonna change the setup for this for the next meeting. I'm gonna go have the board of Slackman does it, so nobody gets to call in. You can only call in, you can only, you can use your phone if you log in, but you don't get to just call in with a random number or with a number as a panelist, so.
That's the way it was set up, right? Isn't that, because that's the preamble I read. It says, if you call in, you can't participate, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
All right. All right, whatever.
You, can you hear me? I can unmute. Oh.
Yeah, you are now. You're good now.
So move line 59 down below line 63 then, or just before 65. That makes me happy. St. Augustine Drive, I didn't know if we want, wanted to have a note that because Shaffer was a new member, he's unable to participate in the discussion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Bob, yeah, you're good, Bob.
All right, so I was gonna make that comment for both Augustine and on Wendell. I was gonna suggest you put a note in there that I did not participate and I removed myself audio and video from the meeting. It gets a little confusing because of the way we voted on Augustine. I was allowed to vote to return the bond money, but I was removed from the hearing portion.
Right, yeah, got it. So can we add those comments? Yes. Great.
Okay, and then page 230, 273 of the packet, which is page four of the minute. Under general business, Hummingbird Lane, so, oh, wait a minute. Never mind, I, you already had that mic recued. I missed that. Forget me. I guess that was it.
All right, anybody else? Seeing no other comments, I would say all those in favor of approving the minutes for July 6th with comments made tonight, say aye. Mike? Dylan? Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I say aye. Let the record reflect that Mike and Dylan both.
Mike and Dylan.
Aye.
All right. All set.
I mean, we're just starting to have fun. I feel bad putting forward a motion to adjourn.
Rebecca, I'm sorry to kick on you when it wasn't your fault.
Well, it's okay, Kate. Myself more, more quickly next time.
Oh, Rebecca, you're gonna be in the office tomorrow? Maybe I'll come down and do those signatures tomorrow.
Uh, sure, just what time do you think you'll be there? I won't be there till after nine, so if you come after then, I'll be there, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, later morning probably would be great.
Okay, anytime after nine is fine.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, so is there a motion to adjourn? So.
Second.
Second, all right. I don't know, do we, do we have a vote on that or no? I've heard different things.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I say aye. All right. Good day, everybody. All right, have a good night.